How much time does that usually take?
Well, I'm pretty much retired from farming now. I don't put in a crop anymore, but I do harvest for people, so.
Oh, gotcha.
So that's way down, but still downsizing the equipment and things like that. And now I'm just working on buildings at the farm and upgrading some. I've got a shop that I've emptied the upstairs and rebuilding that into a wood shop. So that I'm looking forward to. Getting that done, so I can spend some time in the winter out there. Then I've got a granary I took mostly down last summer. We've got to finish taking it down. Here's the inside of a barn. It's twenty wide and fifty long. So make everything out of there. Cutting open in the end and putting in a couple of them.
Did you throw my windows?
I threw in two doors and put a big door on.
Hey Marty.
So yeah.
Good year.
Then I've got a big garden, so we can spend a lot of time in it, so.
Do you plan that?
potatoes and onions.
I'll go just for. To make it easier on Jason, I'll go get the flag.
The rest hopefully is coming weekend.
That desk.
Get the rest in, so.
So you don't have to flip around and face the flag.
Everything else.
You just put the little portable one.
Hey, you heard us.
So yeah.
Oh, sure.
We'll have maybe two hundred tomato plants and maybe a couple of plants. We make lots also.
Oh, that's right. I think you, I think I remember we were talking about that.
Yeah, we can a lot of it.
Well, it might have been actually where we were meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Marshall County.
That could be, so.
I think we were talking about that.
Well, keep moving.
Yeah.
First come, first served.
No, I need it. I can't sit on those right now.
Beat me to it, too. I think we're going to be balancing our garbage. We should have taken a few break boxes.
Yep.
That probably four by ten each or something.
Yep.
So I think we're doing that this weekend. Just wanted to. We, we.
I'm Keegan Mason.
I'm Carson Hamel.
I'm Andrew Oden.
On behalf of Mason Oxran.
From everyone here at Oden Charlet.
And on behalf of the Scattered Star Ranch.
From our family to yours.
From the Phillip community, I just want to say thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
I would like.
At A and W, it's called the original bacon double cheeseburger because we invented it. You're welcome, world. One hundred percent U.S. beef, crispy hickory smoked bacon, invented and perfected here. Not to mention, it's just better with made fresh A and W root beer. At participating restaurants, prices may vary. Tax extra. The Galley Hotel Bar and Grill is on Highway Twelve in Webster. Comfortable non-smoking rooms and their steakhouse and bar are open seven days a week with the grill opening daily at 5:00 P.M. Daily specials and popular wings Wednesdays with over fourteen sauces with traditional bone-in or boneless wings. Thursdays feature Chislic Special Night and their slow-cooked prime rib is served on Friday and Saturday nights. Check them out on Facebook or call six oh five three four five nine nine eight nine for reservations. The Guard helps you get an education. The South Dakota Army National Guard offers all its service members in-state tuition assistance towards your college or technical school education. For your service, you will receive fifty percent off tuition at all South Dakota Board of Regents colleges. If you attend a technical school in the state, you will receive eighty-three point five percent off tuition. For more information, visit their Facebook and Instagram pages or check out their website, nationalguard.com/SD. World-class service with hometown friendliness. That's what you can expect from the staff of Haylor Automotive. We sell new vehicles from both Chevrolet and Buick along with a good selection of late-model pre-owned vehicles. And if you're looking for something a little more vintage, come take a look at our classic car showroom, Highway Twelve Classics. We have a full service department, parts department, and a body shop. We're conveniently located East Highway Twelve in Webster or view all of our inventory online at haylorauto.com.
Parabooms Cafe, your hometown family restaurant since nineteen seventy-six, going on four generations of quality, friendly service always here for you and your family. We serve locally ground burger from Jorgensen Meat, never frozen and hand-patted right here in our own kitchen. Parabooms Cafe has our very own soup Nazi Mitch, who creates tasty, good-for-your-soul soups daily. And of course, a Parabooms breakfast like our popular scrap pile or the famous puma rolls will cure any morning glows you may have, all while being treated graciously from one of our kind staff. Parabooms Cafe, go Bearcats!
For those who don't like to be still, for those with things to do and the drive to get them done, for those in search of a partner to help make it happen, there's a bank. A bank that listens, acts, and impacts all things right here. Dakota Bank. Go with experience, go with teamwork, go with integrity for banking, insurance, mortgage, and trust. Dakota Bank, here for you. Member FDIC, equal housing lender, insurance and trust services, not FDIC insured.
Limestone canyons, flowing waterfalls, and pristine beauty make Spearfish a sanctuary for those seeking the ultimate escape. Outdoor enthusiasts will find top-notch sport climbing, mountain biking, and UTV OHV trails. Guests are steps away from peaceful hiking trails and tranquil streams. Relax and rehash your day's adventure at one of our award-winning local breweries. Finding rest is an important part of any adventure. Lodging in Spearfish comes with a variety of choices, from cabins, B and Bs, and campgrounds to the comforts of your popular brand-name hotels. To find your unique adventure in Spearfish, go to visit spearfish.com now.
A membership with Sioux Valley Co-op will benefit you. Simply put, a membership with Sioux Valley Co-op is ownership. They're owned and controlled by members, no outside investors. So all of their annual revenues go back to their customers. Become a member today. You will benefit.
Partnering with champions. RDO does that. Whether it's on the farm, the football field, or in the backyard, RDO prides itself on partnering with champions. For over one hundred years, John Deere has been a champion of building the finest compact tractors available. Let RDO Equipment Company be your compact tractor sales and service champion. Plus, with zero percent financing available, there's never been a better time to purchase your next compact tractor. Don't miss your chance to discover the RDO Equipment Company difference for yourself. Visit rdoequipment.com to find a dealer near you.
Winning isn't everything, it's how you play the game that counts. If your values tell you the same, let's start a new conversation about money. At Thriving Financial, we believe money is a tool, not a goal. Because it's not just about making more, it's about doing more for your family, church, and community. Call Webster Thriving Financial today at six oh five three four five three six three five.
I'm Keegan Mason.
I'm Carson Hamel.
I'm Andrew Oden.
On behalf of Mason Oxran.
From everyone here at Oden Charlet.
And on behalf of the Scattered Star Ranch.
From our family to yours.
From the Phillip community, I just want to say thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you, the consumers.
We thank you for choosing Beef.
Thank you for choosing Beef.
At A and W, it's called the original bacon double cheeseburger because we invented it. You're welcome, world. One hundred percent U.S. beef, crispy hickory smoked bacon, invented and perfected here. Not to mention, it's just better with made fresh A and W root beer. At participating restaurants, prices may vary. Tax extra. The Galley Hotel Bar and Grill is on Highway Twelve in Webster.
I think it's definitely, I'm late, it's five thirty-one. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Stan, uh, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment. Executive session after discussion for boiler slash CTE project. Executive session will be in regards to personnel. So, thank you, Joel. Second, Mr. Gakowski behind me. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Conflicts disclosure? ISG, AI, nobody here is working for ISG or AI, so I think we're good to go here tonight, no conflicts. Public communications? None? All right, then we'll go ahead and get things going tonight. For those on Bearcat TV and watching later on, we have the pleasure of having ISG out of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. They're an engineering architectural firm that has been working with us as to some building architectural structure issues here at the school. And we also have AI Architectural Inc., I believe, presenting later on. Just so you gentlemen know who everybody is here, I don't think I've met everybody here possibly, but my name is Tom Santos. I have to my left Marty LeWinga, right behind you, Aaron Gakowski, and obviously you guys would be familiar with Larry Drevah, Joel Schumaker, John Sur, with the reporter and farmer. And then we have Bearcat TV here. We won't tell who's behind the camera because we might have to blame something later on on them, so we can have anonymous. It might be Mike Wiley for the record that's behind the camera today. All right, with that being said, gentlemen, we'll go ahead and turn it on over to you.
All right. Well, thank you for having us here today. I might jump on this side and take that side. My name is Josh Muckinher and I'm an architect with ISG. I'll let Kevin, my counterpart here, introduce himself.
I'm Kevin Hill Grant with ISG. I'm facility planner and management. Past life was forty years being facility director for two different districts, and I came to ISG three years, a little over three years ago. Now to do most of the facility assessments, maintenance, deferred plans for commercial, residential, schools, everything. They have me do, run all over the place, so glad to be here.
So just to kind of give a background, I mean, you're all probably familiar, but we, myself, Kevin, structural and mechanical, we came to the school a few weeks back and kind of walked through instead of facility assessment. So that's one of the items that we'll be presenting here tonight, just some of the initial findings on that and answer any question you guys may have. And I know we did kind of pay particular attention to some of the boiler concerns because that was, you know, an immediate from what we were seeing, a need that you guys were expressing. So we did, we did look at that and we kind of, since we were here, kind of looked at everything at the same times. So we'll walk through those first. That's just the introduction. So myself, Kevin, and then Matt and Cody joined us, and then Steve Schleich is the senior mechanical engineer that was working. He's been working with Cody, those two kind of hand in hand, taking a look at some of those mechanical items.
So existing conditions, we lump them into three groups, good, fair, and poor. Good typically in our reports means in working condition and we really don't see any immediate needs you need to do. If we put it in the fair, it's in working condition, but there's some concerns that we have that you should be taking care of, whether it's short-term, probably less than five years or less. Poor condition is it's either it's not working or it's imminent that it needs some immediate attention. Could be a rough leak, could be something on that order that, some electrical thing, so it's a safety thing. Next slide will show a little more on that.
I did want to point out, as we're going through this, you know, the facility assessment, we do look at kind of all some of the items for, you know, I could use some maintenance, but at the same time, we wanted to also point out that there's still a lot of things. And I know it looks like a lot of checklists, like there's a lot of things we got to fix, but the school itself is, there's a lot of good things going on here too, so it's not necessarily all bad news with these.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that. I did one a few years ago and a couple of board members are crying, it's like, oh, we got crap. And it's like, no, that's not the case, you know? Our job is to go and look at all the bad things, or look at everything and then give you a list of what's bad and you need to repair. But yes, you have a lot of good things going on. One thing that, you know, being the facility director for forty years in a couple of different districts, one thing I did notice, you do have a nice clean school. Maintenance on the other side, there's some concerns and some issues. The one galley I have leaving or has left already, but I heard her in the background introducing the new guy and talking about some steam stuff. She knew her steam stuff very well, I was impressed. But steams, steam these days, you know, in the boiler situation is kind of old-school and we start moving and we'll talk about that a little bit toward hot water systems versus steam. And then, yeah, priority-wise, it's kind of the same as a good, fair, and poor, but priority-wise, if it's a safety risk, be it electrical, be it anything else, definitely it's in the immediate needs, one to two, and then I always look at things that would cause further damage to your building. If it's a moisture problem, it's going to cause further damage, it's going to cost you more later to fix it versus fixing it now. It gets a priority one. Priority two, it's, and you can see that, it's a timeframe, zero to two, three to five, seven plus is your priority threes. Some of the, I mean, we, as we work through these, I mean, this is how we put them in the report initially. When you start making a master plan for deferred maintenance, we work together with you to create that. You might want to push some things off or you see some things that need to move to the top. I know when I worked with higher ed schools, they definitely put a higher value on aesthetics, curb appeal. Because a lot of parents in that drive by and they see it. Public schools, and I've been working in public schools forty years, a lot, depending where you're at, curb appeal isn't as important. Front door to me is always important, you know? Where does everybody come, the parents come, how far do they get into your building, the taxpayers, how far do they get in? They don't get into the classroom, so why are we spending so much time in the classroom? We should be making the front door, everything else look better. Not that the classroom should go, you know, way down the list, but what's important to you as a community on how you see the school and how the community sees you managing the school is the school board. So that's how we work on the priority list, and as we develop that list with you, hopefully we'll work with you. Making your long-term maintenance plan is how much money is needed per year. We work and massage those back and forth on priorities, so that's, it's a workable document, it's an Excel sheet, and we love working with you guys to help create, and sometimes the school boards take it on themselves and just start creating it and changing it around, so.
All right, so certainly some of the architectural structure, this is just a high level. I know we had sent over, have you guys all seen the full report document?
Yes.
So what we'll run through here is just going to be some of the summary items, kind of the big picture, just to kind of recap what was there. So one of the items that we looked at right away was, and one thing we recommend is developing a roof maintenance plan. And I can play some plans from looking at the drawings and talking to Jim. Our understanding is that a lot of the roofs could be twenty years old or more, so that's kind of getting up to the useful life. We didn't see any immediate issues that need to be, you know, replaced now, but it's just more of a, once you get that replacement plan, you can start budgeting for it, just knowing that it's going to be coming down the line, because roof replacements can be quite spendy. So a lot of times you like to break that down into different chunks rather than having a big budget item, you know, at one time to replace it all. Because if you replace it all at once now, you're going to have to do the same thing in twenty years or whatever. So starting to just think about how you break that down. This is something we recommend. A lot of the other items are, I mean, some of them are ADA-related. We did note at just the elementary school, you know, there's the entrance there, you have the two stairs, no ramp. I mean, that's not necessarily, you don't have to replace that right now, so you have other accessible entrances, but we just recommend something to look at, you know, in the future, if you were to have a remodel or anything, to have a ramp or something to make that entrance accessible, the kind of the front door as Kevin was alluding to. Some other items, you can kind of see some photos here, so this is the northeast entrance, kind of between the high school, middle school, going out in the courtyard. So just over here, I believe, if I'm oriented correctly. But there was just the curb here, it's just showing some of the grading was kind of going back to the building, so we just recommend regrading that, which we'll get into some of that also later.
That was kind of right around this corner here. There was quite a bit of drop-off there where a good angle coaster, someone could get, really get hurt there off to the other side of that.
Yep.
Something that surprised me in this section, this is from this section, two thousand and five. Skyward-facing joints, so your window sills that face the sky. A lot of the mortar in the, in those joints has failed or quite a bit has failed, allowing moisture to get behind and then with freeze-thaw cycle, it's starting to pop out, oops.
Touch screen.
Your vertical, yeah, touch me, your vertical joints. Number one in building outside maintenance is water is not our friend. Water can cause all sorts of issues inside your building, be it your roof, be it your walls. This is quite a few issues you have in this section. This section right across the way, and you actually can look out, you can see it, all your downspouts, they drop about this high off the ground and the water splashing back against it. Here you have bricks that it's called falling, the faces actually snapped off a bit, so the freeze-thaw cycle, your bricks are wet. It snaps the front off, so you're getting moisture in behind that wall, which, nobody likes to amble or mold, but it could create mold issues. But you've got an issue, once you see it on the outside, you have no idea how bad it is on the inside. So you might want to do some destructive testing, I call it destructive testing, where you have to cut out a few blocks, see what's actually going on behind there before you'd actually fix the front. Those are some concerns that I have on the outside of the building.
Yeah, and kind of the, kind of the, or to summarize the last bolt here, down in the coal storage area, which I know is an area that we're going to be talking about when it comes to the mechanical system, but we noticed the beam that was in there was rusting, showing some water damage. So if that was to remain, depending on what the future and the planning is, we would just recommend replacing that steel beam and the column, kind of putting it and casing it in some concrete, because the base of the column was also showing a little bit of water just because the floor down there was, had quite a bit of moisture, so just to prolong its life.
Bottom picture, railings is typical, salt, you put out salt and the bottoms rust a lot, so. Keeping up on maintenance on them, sanding them down, repainting them quite often, depends on how much salt you have. That one's gone to the point where it's rusted, the steel in the concrete itself, so the concrete started to push out, which eventually it'll just crack totally away and your railing will be loose, so. This kind of climate, salt, sand, all that gets into those cracks and creates those issues.
What would be a better solution in that situation, a bolt-on hand railing that can be removed or an aluminum one?
Steps inside, I'm sorry.
All great ideas, yeah, you know, whether you put cannibes over and keep the elements out of it, yeah. Stainless steel, I've seen stainless steel, higher ed, a lot of times they use a lot of stainless steel to prevent that. Maintenance staff not putting so much salt in those areas.
Yep.
Using a pre-treat maybe, beet, beet juice or something to keep it from sticking. Some of those things just, and some of it just don't salt the steps and get out there and shovel them, sand them. Seen some places, actually I did it in my house, I put in-floor heat or tubes out there. You'll see it at hospitals, a lot of the emergency areas, they'll put into tubes in the concrete to keep them warm, especially steps because they're such a hazardous area.
True.
Keep them warm so you don't have those issues, so you don't have to salt them. Some places have gone more just sand, not salt, just to get the grip there so you don't trip or slip and that. But that is, you know, this climate, you see a lot of rusting on the outside and landscaping issues, killing the grass. A lot of those curb areas and all that, and you saw it here, you see it everywhere where everybody uses salt. Good questions. Anything else on those slides?
Well, you know, I just got to mention, so when I first read the report, I read the report and I didn't pay attention to the photographs.
Okay.
The second time I went back through, I actually started looking at these photographs and I'm like, are those stock photos or are they actually the photographs from the school? Well, then when you flip the page, you're like, okay, these are definitely photographs from the school. And it's interesting how when you go through with a fine-tooth comb and with a detailed eye looking for the things, these things jump out. Because I think the majority of the taxpayers, the majority of the patrons, you know, they walk by and they see the school. They don't see the issues that you're pointing out, and that's why I'm glad you guys have come through and do this because this needs to be brought to our attention, because just when I look across the street and I do look and I can see, one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, just from right here, six bricks that you're describing.
Yeah.
Right there.
I love taking boards on, walking tours of your building. I love doing that and showing you all these things, because yeah, then it starts sinking in, because average person, you know, you walk by it every day, you never notice it. With a trained eye, yeah, we catch a lot of these things, and there are little things that your staff, you know, and I've found and done staff trainings too, for things to see that they can walk by it every day too, but things that would help make their job easier and catching these things ahead before they snowball and turn into a big, big problem. So electrically, these are all photos from your oldest section, which is the thirty-nine. You have fuse panels, screw-in fuses, thirty, oops. I gotta quit touching that. Mean technology. So the screw-in fuses, I talked to your staff right away, number one, there's two fuses that aren't screwed in. Five thousand dollars a whole, OSHA fines, immediate, you know, non-negotiable. Those breakers are even on where those fuses are, so it's dark, you stick your fingers in there, you're getting electrocuted. Ungrounded outlets, a lot of that, thirty-nine additions. This is in the Family and Consumer Science area, just an old, old breaker panel, so thirty-nine, that's sixty, eighty years old, this equipment.
And just to clarify, that's in what we call the CTE wing of the building.
Yes.
Okay.
And then just, you know, the wires, when I open a panel, look behind them, you know, the cloth tape, the cloth wrappings, insulation and that, it's just, there's a lot of hazards there, a lot of issues in your electrical in that part of the building. The rest of the building is really actually pretty good. Electrical equipment, fifty years is about the life of a lot of it. It can last longer, but I know many places don't have a maintenance-type program on electrical. Circuit breakers should be tripped, exercised, especially your mains at least once a year. Because when you need it, it needs to trip, and if you aren't exercising them, you're going to have trouble. Trouble with that is your mains, you need to be suited up in all sorts of protective gear, otherwise arc flash is huge and electrical and could kill you. Question on your face, exercising equipment, no?
No, I'm not going to go home and try it myself, that's just what I'm thinking. I question it.
And just safety at home, if you're ever resetting a circuit breaker, don't stand in front of the panel. Stand to the side and trip it. When it's tripped, reset it, stand to the side, in case something would happen. It blows out at you, you'll only hurt your hand, you won't hurt your face and eyes.
I was just going to call my friend Gary to chip and trap.
Electrical, yeah, and the thirty-nine, it's replaced, replaced, but we'll talk about that. I mean, if you're looking at certainly, you've got a lot of strikes against that partial of the, part of the building. It's old, it's got a lot of issues and concerns, electrical is one of them.
I should know this, but where are the twisting fuses?
On stage.
Is that an active box?
Yep, well, I don't know, your staff person wasn't there at the time. I don't know.
That's on the stage?
Yeah, it's on the stage. There are a lot of things, I mean, we don't, when we do these tests, it's all visual. We aren't opening panels and all this other stuff, we, we'd be here for a week and a day and. So if you take something out of service, it should be and needs to be removed from service. I mean, physically taken out so you don't get confused whether it's active or not. But electrically, the rest of the building's in really, really good shape. Newer panels, your two thousand, seventy, seventy-one was remodeled in eleven, so you have some new panels in that section. Ninety-five, of course, this section over here, that's all newer stuff. Your middle school section, nineties, that's thirty years old. You still have at least a good twenty on that before you really start thinking, do we need to start replacing? This here, chances are you'd have to go on the, I call it black market, on the market to try to find used parts. They don't even make parts for that anymore, so you'd have to find some used ones somewhere. The older they get, the harder they are to find, but at that point with that age, you don't, if you have to, because you have to get it up and running, electrician will figure something out, but plenty ahead, long-term maintenance type things, it's got to go.
Where's that box at?
This one's, I call it Family and Consumer Science, it was in the back. You have two rooms, a back room.
So like a kitchen area in there?
Yeah, there is a back, pan, I think it was in the pantry. That panel was in there. Other questions on electrical?
So everything but the vocational wing, I mean, when you color-coded it, would you have considered it green pretty much then at that point in time? And I consider the nineteen thirty-nine wing.
Thirty-nine is, yeah.
Is red.
Yep, the rest is green, yeah. Rest in good shape. Other question on electrical?
And I, I wanted to clarify that too, because when, you had me a little confused there, when you said the rest of the building is in good shape, you mean the rest of the campus. That nineteen thirty-nine wing is in tough shape.
Right.
But the rest of the campus is in good shape.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, yep. So roofs, we talked about roofs a bit. You haven't talked about roofs, you've been here twenty-some years and you haven't done a roof project yet.
I, I do recall one roof project before I was the superintendent, so it would have been sometime between two thousand and one and two thousand and five, but I have no idea which one it is.
Two thousand and one, two thousand and five, so that, you know, one project maybe is twenty years, the rest are older. You've got one section in the thirty-nine again, it's a balisted EPDM, so it's a rubber roof, it's loose-laid and rock on top of it. It is shrinking quite a bit, so it's pulling away from the walls, it's pulling anywhere where you have penetration, so any HVAC, any plumbing-type things, vent pipes and that, where they are, they stay static in the position and the rubber shrinks, so it's starting to pull against that, it's starting to pull against the wall. where they are, um, they stay static in the position and the ru- rubber shrinks, so it's starting to pull against that, it's starting to pull against the wall. So it's tenting, it's pulling tight against the wall. You've got some leaks going down the hallway, the staff has said, you've got them fixed again, but it's, it's happening. That section there is the worst, in the worst condition, and I put that as a priority one to do. All relates back into what are you doing with the thirty-nine addition? The original thirty-nine. The rest of the roofs, um, like Josh said, roofs are expensive, they, uh, they used to, I used to be able to budget twelve, fifteen dollars a square foot. Today's economy, we're looking more than eighteen to twenties. Roofing has gotten very expensive with COVID issues, so it adds up in a hurry. When you start planning or budgeting long-term, you don't want them all to come do it at once, because that's a lot of millions of dollars. So try to space them out as best you can, you wanna push them as far as you can, but then how critical is that area? Your gym with a wood floor, you do not want that to leak, because you'll ruin your floor. If it leaks in here, you got tile floor, it's not the end of the world. So maybe a little higher priority on the gym one to push it earlier in its life cycle. Roofing, EPDMs, and you have fully adhered EPDMs, so glued-down rubber roofs. They don't shrink, because they're glued down, they're all, you know, firm and everything. They don't have a tendency to move, but they do age because of the sun. Twenty to thirty years, twenty, twenty-five years is typical. Your warranties, the ones, the one we did see was only, a lot of manufacturers only get ten, but you can push it, you pay more, you get twenty to thirty-year warranties. I'm assuming these are forty-five mil, thickness of the roof is only forty-five mils. Newer rubber roofs are sixty or even ninety, we just put a new one in Iowa, ninety mil thick. You get a good thirty years out of those roofs and you can go farther. Depending on the amount of traffic you have up there, if you have a lot of kids overnight or anyone running around, or how much HVAC equipment you have up, have on the roof. If people are walking up there, that'll shorten life, but a lot of times if you have equipment up there, you'll put a walking path with pavers, so you don't hurt the roof. Long-term, get a plan together on how you wanna start attacking the roof replacement plan. Downspouts?
Just, I, should I write that, so what used to be the standard was forty-five mil?
Yes.
And now you're getting closer to sixty?
Well, thirty, uh, forty-five mil, yep.
And now the standard's closer to the sixty to ninety mil?
I still see forty-fives going on, it's, it's all in how much you wanna spend.
Right.
The standard hasn't changed, but they've upgraded?
Yeah.
The standard's still forty-five?
Well, yeah, standard is forty-five, but there's more options now, sixties and nineties, where there wasn't in the past.
I'd say from what I've worked on, sixty's probably the most common for, for new, new builds from what we're seeing.
Could be code, depending on.
What's that?
It could be a code issue.
I don't think the mil thickness is a code, we haven't run into that, so.
And then is the mil thickness just, uh, life expectancy, is that the only thing you get from the mil thickness, or is it anything else?
The thicker it is, the more abuse or use it will take, I mean, walking on it, a forty-five versus a ninety, ninety's twice as thick, so.
Life expectancy.
Life expectancy, it, it relates kind of hand-in-hand with life expectancy.
Do you also get a longer warranty out of that then, I would say?
You can push it, you push a manufacturer to give you a thirty-year warranty on a forty-five mil. They put on, they put on the same roof. The trouble is they're gonna charge you more.
But if you put on the ninety or sixty or the ninety, you shouldn't get a little bit longer warranty out of the deal.
Yeah.
Versus a twenty-five.
Yep.
Would you prorate that, Marty?
No.
I
Not for homeowners.
When I
It's probably.
When I did roofs as a facility director, I always had an NDL, no dollar limit. So I had a thirty-year warranty for thirty years, my butt was covered for thirty years, no cost to me. Now, a lot of these, you know, warranties, if you aren't watching it, they'll give you declining scale. So in ten years, if they give you a ten-year warranty, you're down to ten percent on the tenth year. I love NDLs, because I, when I put it on for thirty years, I've gotten no expense for thirty years, absolutely none. And that contractor's always on the hook for typically two to five years, and then the manufacturer's for the rest of it, typical roof warranties. So the manufacturer's gonna watch how that roof is put on, if they gotta guarantee every dollar for the next thirty years. Annual inspections, when you do a re-roof, insists that the manufacturer inspect it every year too. Then it's put on them, but they need to make sure it qualifies. Downspouts, I noticed a lot of them are very high or missing, so that you're getting splashed on the ground. Water management on roofing is very important, you've got a lot of roofs up here, the gym, and then the outside roofs that go to the side. All that water is coming off and it gets all, you only have two roof drains, I think I counted, in the thirty-nine. Everything else goes to, um, out, out to the edge of the roof and onto the ground. Internal drains is your best, because you're, what happens is you get it to the edge of the roof and you're creating a problem down below. Up front, you're washing out and now it's created a belly and all the water stays against your building. The other ones where you have sidewalks, it's going across it, and those freeze thaw's, you're, I'm sure you're getting ice across it, you got the trenches in the, in the piping underneath, but you've got some problems there. I recommend when you re-roof that you start looking at putting internal drains. You need two sources of drains, you can have overflow stuffers for your second, but your primary should be the actual drain that it takes it away. Yeah, and, you know, in this situation here, pipe doesn't, downspout doesn't make it to the pipe. Out here in the courtyard, they're a couple feet off the ground, they don't make it to the edge. Anytime you get that water, you need to manage it, manage it in-house, take it inside pipes. Um, if you're gonna do an HVAC remodel, when you have the ceilings open, that's a great time to get your pipes and run them, um, to get that water taken care of and managed. Your red was probably a brighter red, now it's a little faded, but the red that goes all around, all that water's coming down and dropping about three feet out. Some of that red's really starting to rust down below, um, can you put in integral gutter in that system? Uh, we, I talked to a couple engineers and, at this point with that age, they don't think you could probably do it cost-effectively, so remove it and put a gutter system in to manage that water, it's all in managing the water and how we wanna handle that. Which our whole list there basically is drainage, drainage, drainage. This newest addition, what's that, ninety-five, two thousand eleven, two thousand five? You're dropping off the water behind your retaining wall. It's coming down, so what's happening, all that moisture is there behind the retaining wall, but I don't look at that retaining wall, it is tipping. You've got way too much water behind that wall and it's just pushing it out. And until we can manage that water and effectively get rid of it, you're gonna have, so don't fix the retaining wall before you take care of the water.
Just for the record, that's what we've been talking about, doing is we have been budgeting some money for the retaining wall, but it's like, why go fix this retaining wall before we fix the route?
Right, exactly, perfect, yep. And I noticed by the air conditioner condenser out there, I mean, it's already made a hole there, so it's holding the water back against the building, so. It's gonna compound the issues and you can start having foundation issues and it can even start getting into the building at the, at the footing level, so. Playground ADA surfacing, you wonder how, playground ADA, P-Rock's not an acceptable media for fall protection for ADA, wood chips, rubber balls. There's a couple different options for that, but playgrounds, you've got some issues with elevations and all that, but it's not just the ADA surfacing, it's, there's other things that need to get corrected at the same time, so it works better, works well together. And I'm sorry, I could talk for days and hours, like, days, weeks, so, just cut me off.
No, it's okay, I mean, I've learned a lot about roof and I like how you just explained, I mean, we have, I mean, when you talk about that retaining wall, we've had it in the budget three, four years, and we've always said, nope, put it off, put it off, put it off, and I think that was good that we did do that. So going back to that first picture on the left, just what is that showing me exactly, is that what you're talking about with the shrinkage on the, other?
I don't have one in here for shrinkage, this one is actually, uh, da-da-da-da.
It looks like
That corner over there, I believe. You can see all this here, i- it's sediment, so number one, it isn't all, yeah, it's pooling. It isn't all getting off your roof, and you want your water to get off your roof within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. When you start seeing that, you know it's not coming off the roof fast enough.
That's right over the elementary entrance.
Is that in that corner over there?
Oh, where like Mr. Case's
That little piece is the elementary gym, so that's facing north.
That's over there, right?
Okay.
So where that's draining down, I mean, you've got a, a stoop out there, and I mean, just a lot of these locations, they're just bad placements for your roof drain. Now, that should be a secondary drain, you should be taking it internal, but where that's dropping, and then you've got one out back here by the gas meter. All that, half of that gym comes down, then all that other roof comes down, and it all comes over to the gas meter, and the, the maintenance staff says, well, we're chipping away ice on the gas meter and all this in the wintertime, it's like, that's
Just FYI, we did have a, got a gas leak about three, four years ago. Um, and it was due to the ice accumulating on that and pushed one of the pipes, made the fire control over and so we made some changes on that particular downspout, but we see still
Yep, so basically, water management with roof water is very important, and how to manage it. And that's where you don't do onesies, twosies, think about the whole thing and make, make plans as you do it. With your roof plans, you know, the new code is talking more insulation, so you gotta bring everything up, so at that point, drain them to internal drains and take it out that way to a storm drain. Figure out where the storm drains, I know I saw one out here, but figure out where your storm drains are, even these catch basins are the overflows. Bringing those to catch to a storm drain, so you don't do it on the surface and it doesn't hit the building, but personally, the best thing for your building is to not let it run over the edge, take care of it inside.
So Jim, then, if I'm getting those top two photographs, those would be, you know, with the, the red facade or the roof, that's all from the nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six?
Both of those pictures.
All of those pictures would be the middle school, everything, so we would be hitting our twenty-five, twenty-six-year window anyway on what you're saying on that roof, and that's a forty-five mil up there?
Well, it's all, it's worn off, so I'm assuming it is?
I don't, no, I, I wanna say there's been some work done on that one, and the only reason I say that is, um, what do you call that where it pulls in the corner, it's, uh,
Tenting?
Yeah, the tenting, I think we had that pretty severe, um, when I first arrived here as, as principal, I wasn't superintendent, so I wasn't. So we might have done something with that middle school since it's been built, but I don't know that for sure. I, I have a thing to do, we've gotta go through and find any information on our roofs.
Yeah.
To, uh, to see how they actually are, if we can determine that.
The next step then would, you know, also in roofing, you pull core samples. Wet insulation is your worst, and you have to replace wet insulation, but it has no insulation value once it gets wet, so. Random core samples will also help tell you what's going underneath and have them patched. There's a whole system on maintenance of the roof on, on, you know, working with you, we can get that figured out and, and put together a great plan on how you wanna address roof replacement.
So when I look at the roofs, I mean, I, I guess going back to your color coding, I get the, the idea, the nineteen thirty-nine building, the vocational wing, not a good roof. Major problems there, replace. So the, the old elementary, or the elementary, the nineteen seventy building, and then the middle school, how would you categorize those on your, where we're at on roofing?
I'd
Life expectancy?
Middle of the pack.
Okay.
Middle of the pack, and then of course the shingled one, you just replaced a couple years ago because of hail damage.
And that's where, for those, we weren't seeing any immediate issues, but just knowing their age is something to start to think about for the future as you're kinda moving forward.
When you say middle of the pack, five, ten-year window?
Yeah, I would think so.
Did you guys happen to check the, um, the seal at the top of the shingles on this, up against the precast?
The top of the shingle?
There was this slope drift right this way, there was a slope drift at sheen.
I couldn't get up to that one.
Is it, I think we had talked about this, the riglet, the ringlet, or
Yeah, riglet, yep.
Um, we had to have that put in after we were in the building two or three years, because it was, it was leaking
Yep.
Along the precast, inside the hallway. And I'm just curious what that looked like.
Yeah, I didn't get back up, I didn't get up way up on the top side, I did notice where the precast met the lower roof on this side. Someone caulked the heck out of it.
Probably on the, the old wrestling room side?
Yep, yep, and
Okay.
It's a mess.
Usually when I had people come, they had these huge caulk guns and like, oh, let's see.
Caulking is a science.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I often tell all the young engineers and that, I said, you know, you should have to have a licensed applied caulk, because you can do more damage putting it on crappy than you can doing a good job. Most of the time you need to take care of the old, get rid of the old and put in new, and it's, there's a depth, there's a width, there's all science and backerot on how that's done correctly and a good caoker is worth their weight in gold. But I've seen some really bad, and a lot of times a contractor might here and just start smearing caulk all over, thinking he's taking care of it, what actually they're doing is trapping it behind. They might stop it for a little bit, but they're causing more damage than they're doing good, but, and that's that riglet along there that, yeah, it's just smeared up. And some of the vertical joints, um, in some of the precast, um, are starting to separate and get old. Caulking, depending on the side of the building it is, eight to ten years, um, sometimes it'll last up to fifteen. Caulk after a while in the sun will get hard and brittle. And caulk is meant to stretch back and forth, back and forth, and after a while, it, elasticity is gone. And it just starts cracking and opens up, then water gets in. So when a contractor comes and re-caulks, they're just gonna smear some over the top while the base is still crap. And the new stuff's not gonna take care of it, so it's hiding issues, but, I'm preaching, I'm sorry.
But you have mentioned insulation, are you able to look at, I mean, and maybe you weren't able to, to our insulation throughout the buildings here, have you had a chance or anything along those lines?
No, I didn't, we didn't bring infrared or anything, it's something we have in our toolbox, we can use it, use to infrared your building. See how the walls do, the windows do, the doors, the roof, even our drones have three, uh, scanning capabilities in three, in that, so. It's another service that we have, but it wasn't, we didn't, it wasn't included in this, but yeah, we've used it on several buildings, been all, and that'll tell you where you have wet insulation on your roof too. It'll really help on that. Anything else on that? Oh, boy.
Yeah, as we're, and as we're jumping in the next one, I'm curious on the time, I don't have my phone, just to make sure we're kinda
Six oh eight right now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll
And we've got till seven, right, the next one?
Six three. Yeah, six three, oh, well, we wanted time for question and answers and then just a little bit of transition time for the next group at seven.
I can get the boiler one pretty quick.
Replace, move on.
Let's go to the top one, or the second one, the egg, egg shop welding hood, you gotta hold up here. It was good when I was kid, you were a kid involved in class, it was okay. Well, you're welding here, the fumes come to your face. No, 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 you put the, the hood there, the exhaust, so it sucks it away from you, so you don't smell it. You have the old style hood up here, but in that other building you have, wherever downtown, the exhaust goes that way, way to do it. You don't have it here, dust collection system, you don't, it's non-existent, of course, you don't have a wood shop here. So is any, the other place there is a wood, I don't know, okay. Art room exhaust fan, again, not existent, um, art rooms have a lot of felt, uh, smells and this and that, and code says point seven CFM per square foot for exhausting in an art room, you don't have it.
When did that code start? I mean, the building's only fifteen years old.
I don't know, on that.
The mechanical, I'd have to look back.
I'd have to look back on mechanical codes. Mechanical, uh, the engineer that, they cited that, that it wasn't up to code.
But for like architectural, they rewrite those books every like three years or so, so it could happen.
Mechanical, yeah, mechanicals, they're always under review.
Yeah.
It's just a, you know, ongoing cycle. Temperature controls, a lot of concerns there, you have pneumatic system, which your thermostats are running off of compressed air. Um, they are really good for certain things, used to be. That's going away, all your electronics are coming in, and that's the way everybody's going, and try to get a non, um, proprietary type system totally back net, so anybody can talk to it. You start going down the road with one company, you're married without divorce, without parole. You're stuck with them forever unless you've got a lot of gym to get out of it, because they're not cheap. Science room gas shut-offs, you have gas shut-offs, the ones behind the locked door, uh, you need basically the panic switch like that one right there. Um, where you can shut off the gas, um, a master shut-off switch, uh, buttons like that to show off your gas. Basement sump pump, um.
I think that was on that.
Yeah, downstairs.
The little garage in the restaurant.
Yeah, they're sucking it out with the vacuum every swap, it sounded like, instead of having it pumped out. So boiler room. We gave you some options on some ways to go, I mean, I could give you fifty options on different ways to go. You have steam boiler downstairs, pretty good-sized one, um, it's a monster. You're re-tubing it every three years, there's, how would I put it politely, well, again, you shouldn't have to re-tube a boiler every three years. Water chemistry is very important in a boiler. The staff here does not know that much about water chemistry, you have a company that supplies your chemicals, but he's not doing his job by coming and testing every month, they should be here every month testing. Boiler chemicals very important, either too acidic, you're on one, one way or the other, and you're gonna eat metal. And that's what's happening, is you're eating the metal. You're re-tubing a boiler every three years, I was told, re-tubing boilers? I had boilers that were twenty years old and still would not need to be re-tubed, um, that's something thirty, forty years out to re-tube a boiler. The boiler will last a while, I mean, well, it can go out today, it can go out tomorrow, boiler should last a while, I mean, you've lived with it this long, um, what are your plans, big thing is what are your plans for the thirty-nine? What are your plans? We showed you some options in the book, um, we can put your boiler room over on that side of the building, you can make that your main boiler room, that's your only boiler room. You can pipe hot water back to this. That section, the thirty-nine, you're using steam to heat it. You're also using steam, but you're converting it, it's not even leaving the boiler room, you're converting it to hot water right away. So that hot water is what's heating the other parts of your building.
Does everybody understand that part of, you know, that we're actually, you know? Will you just explain it to the board all, more importantly, they know if they come back and watch this on? Cause it's, they can pull it up on the internet, thanks, Mr. Richie for being here tonight.
The boiler downstairs, the big, the oldest boiler, that thirty-nine boiler, the big old Kawani water tube, fire tube boiler. Fire goes down tubes, has several passes and water's wrapped all around it. You have metal tubes that go front to back. You are heating your building with steam. We did it for many, many, many years, most of my career, I, when I quit three years ago, I still had two boilers in ten of my buildings. The ten buildings I managed that still had steam. Um, it's more efficient to convert them to hot water, whether you convert the boiler or just replace the boiler with a hot water boiler versus a steam. They're more efficient. Your steam boilers are maybe, maybe eighty percent. That's if you're running efficiently, otherwise you can get hot water boilers up to ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent efficiency. Steam has to go out, it condenses, it comes back, so you have steam trap maintenance all the time to do. Um, that's what I said earlier about your galosh, newer steam traps and how to, how to replace them. Um, and that's the thirty-nine. The rest of the steam that's being made or produced down there goes to a converter ten feet away, converts, uses that steam and, and gets hot water. And that hot water then is pumped to the rest of the building to heat those areas. So you're heating that with steam, but then changing it to hot water. More efficient, easier to manage, um, those systems are closed systems, so they don't allow fresh water to come in. Your boiler make up water, I saw the log, you're using quite a bit of water. Make up water in your steam, which tells me you've got some leak somewhere that they don't know about, or it's just how it is. A lot of the pipes are very, they're in tunnels and some could be even underground. Condition of the pipes, if they're thirty-nine and you're having that much trouble with your boilers, you're gonna have pinhole leaks in those steam pipes. If not already, in the very near future. There is some short gaps, some, you know, if you're gonna keep something and, you know, whatever your plan is, we can work around it. You can use, lack of better words, radiator stop leak to kind of fix some of the piping. If you wanted to keep, get by for another year or two, it's not like, we gotta replace it all right now, and then, oh, by the way, we're gonna get rid of that and it's money down the drain. We gotta figure out a long range plan, a long range solution, what is best for your taxpayers, for your money, how to use it wisely. If your goal, or if, if it is to get rid of the thirty-nine addition or do something there, we can work with you on, in managing that boiler system and get as much out of it as you can, so you don't have to spend a lot of money. Boilers aren't cheap. Um, we gave you four, four ways of doing it with, you know, new boilers and different things. You do want redundancy in boilers. You don't wanna push them to the max, and if one goes down or you have trouble, you are starting to lose the building, you can't keep it warm. You know, your house, you only have one furnace probably, and, you know, you hope someone will have the parts right away, you can get it fixed, keep it hot, but. Schools, you, you need that redundancy, you really should have the redundancy, so you have that capability. So there's a lot of things to really, to play into the whole boiler thing, yeah. Efficiencies, you know, eighty if you just kept the steam down to seventy-five, two boilers, three boilers. We gave you some options, and I mean, ranging one point six to two hundred fifty-eight thousand, and two hundred fifty-eight's not doing a whole lot. But I mean, it's, it's totally, you know, a long discussion on, on soul searching and figuring out what do you wanna do with that, that part of the building, and what is your long range plan?
And that's why we're here. That's why we're having this discussion.
Exactly, and that's, you know, it can't all come from me, cause, you know.
So just to clarify, we're, we're, that big boiler down in that basement is heating that water to steam.
Yes.
To heat the old CTE wing.
Yes.
Then we convert it back to hot water.
No, no. The steam condenses and comes back to the boiler, and then it just keeps reheating and goes back out.
So does some of it, does some of it take off the steam and go to the old wing, and some of it immediately turn to water and heat the rest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, some of the steam is used as steam for heat and goes to the CT building and comes back as condensate.
Okay.
Gets reused.
Seems like a.
The rest of the steam goes to these converters and makes hot water that then is pumped to this building and that building, or that building.
But the inefficiency is that you're heating all of the water to a higher temperature for the steam.
It, you know, it's, it's under pressure, but to get it, that extra degree of, to get it to steam, yeah, it takes.
There's, it's, it takes a lot more energy to make steam than to just make hot water.
Yes.
Correct, that's the point I was trying to.
Yep, so you're making your steam, you're over two hundred and twelve. Most of the time your hot water boilers, hundred thirty, hundred forty degrees. You get in the middle of winter, you might go up hundred and sixty, but you don't have to heat it as far, you're, you're keeping more temps.
And hot water boilers.
System will help you manage that water to keep it as low as you can, so you don't waste all that energy.
They're not near as, just large in size as, as what we have down there, I mean.
You can bring them through three foot doors, three by seven doors a lot.
I'm, have, have all you guys seen the boiler?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we actually had Bearcat TV go down and do a video of it, so that the taxpayers can see it as well.
Now, you do have a little steam by stand boiler down there that you bought for, pretty cheap. And if it's not that old, it's not hooked up, in case you had to, to get some emergency.
My fear is if we ever needed that, number one, can we get somebody here?
Competent.
And number two, is it even compatible anymore? You know, are the parts readily available to make it work?
It's not that old boiler, it's probably what, five years, do you think? Five, seven years?
Oh, I've been here for five.
We was here at least five years ago. I'm gonna say it was three years old when we purchased it.
What's, they're pretty standard parts.
I think that one came from Ipswich.
Yeah.
Ipswich installers.
Ipswich is one of them.
Then they did a big, big project.
So, I could spend another hour talking boilers if you want, and we can just, I mean, there's a lot of things that, other decisions that have to be made to get that heating plan, but.
To me, what you're describing, I mean, to me, it's simple. We should be figuring out a way to move away from a steam boiler, get to a hot water system, and A, it's gonna be more efficient, and more importantly, I think easier to maintain for our staff. Because you don't have to necessarily have all that expertise that you were just talking about with steam.
So the question is, you know, I know it's been talked around, you know, is the thirty-nine addition staying? If it is, if it isn't, why are we converting it to hot water? Cause that's an expense that you won't be able to, to take with you in a new bit, or a new part, so. Those are, you know, I'm not telling the public that, yeah, we're condemning it, it's gotta go to the thirty-nine, but it's.
Right.
Part of a discussion that has to happen is it's eighty years old. How long are we hanging on to it?
What's the life expectancy of a boiler like that, that you've seen?
Oh, that boiler?
Yeah.
Um, with good care, a hundred, a hundred and twenty years if you.
Really?
But it's not, but care, uh, water chemistry's compromised it. Very much compromised it, I, right away I had a, I had a young engineer with me, and I saw the boiler. When a boiler tube goes out, you have plugs, there's steel plugs that you pound in the ends to keep the water from seeping everywhere else. So you can still run the op boiler with less tubes, cause there's probably forty, fifty tubes in there. So you hammer these things in on the end, and I saw a pile sitting there, and it's like, oh god, this is not good. If they've got these, they've got boiler trouble, and I talked to the gal later, and she said, oh yeah, we, we re tube every three years, and this, and it's like, oh. The only theory to know what those tubes, what they were.
If you re tube it, but have the right water chemistry, then would it hold up, or is it too far gone already?
Well, some of the damage is downstream too, all your piping downstream, and I don't know what your other surfaces in the boiler are like, cause you not only have the tubes, then you have the face, the face and the butt plate. Uh, that hold the tubes, and then you have the crown sheet, and you've got all the sidewalls. Then you have staples in there that hold the walls together, they'll corrode also. So depending on an internal inspection that would be needed at the time, to know just how long will it really last. Boilers, I mean, it's steel. You cut it out and you can replace corners, you can replace everything inside it, if you just wanna spend the money and put more steel in it. But how much damage is done downstream also in the steam system if the chemistry's not been right for many years?
We have patched a lot of the pipes in the boiler room, as well as some in those two, um, crawl spaces in the vocational wing. Those are accessible. It's the ones that are not accessible are, that we don't, that we don't know about.
And your top option there, the one, you'd have one boiler for the entire campus?
Option one?
Yeah.
Three boilers in that boiler room.
In one room.
In one room.
Central location.
One central boiler room.
Could the one that we have, as a spare downstairs, be used?
That's a steam boiler.
Oh, forget that.
That's a little steam boiler.
I think that what we're using that was maybe that, one of these was using, I think it might have been.
It might have been in here, I think.
One, two, yeah.
Number three.
We got a little breakdown here.
But having one boiler plant would be nice for the staff, maintenance wise and everything else. Once you get the hot water, it's a closed system, you treat it, um, initially and check it once a year, um, because the water doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't, it stays within a closed system. So you put glycol in it, either ethylene or propylene, um, make sure the water chemistry is good once a year. If it has, usually it'll go three, four years without anything. You need to filter it, put it through a constant filter loop to get sediment and other stuff out of it, but they, they, yeah, they'll last a long time. It's like the radiator in your car. Same type system.
Well, let's hit the million dollar question then, what do you think about our space down there?
The boiler room itself?
No, I mean, even to the big, the big picture, I mean, cause I mean, the boiler room's part of the issue. I mean, there's, the roofing is part of the issue, the electrical's part of the issue, I mean, the, everything's part of the issue, but then it still comes down to our number one core function here is to educate. And the, you know, what I call the vocational wing, I still think it has more hallway space in it than it does classroom space almost. It had, you know, it was built for a different time with, you know, different facilities. You've shown the photographs, just like, you know, right now, our egg instructor tells us that if he opens the garage door and the wind's out of the right direction on the right day, then he can do some welding, because then it, uh. Yeah, you know, sucks out here. I don't think that's what we're looking for for our exhaust fan, is for Mother Nature to cooperate with the garage door being open. You know, that's where we've done different things down at the Career Technical Education Center, and so that's what I, you know, when I look at your next page, it is a space inventory and the conceptual planning, that's, what are your thoughts on that? That's where I really wanna.
So I'll give you five seconds or ten seconds on the physical condition of that, the thirty-nine addition. You've got a lot of strikes against it. Um, it's eighty years old, um, personally, it needs to go and get replaced. Um, but I've seen old buildings, I live in a house that was built in eighteen seventy. You know, how much do you wanna put into it? And it leads into the next question where Josh is gonna answer that, is educational adequacy? Is the space adequate for what you're doing today? Josh, it's all yours, I'm done talking for a little bit.
All right, so kinda getting, getting to that point, so we did walk through, well, this entire facility and the, the CTE building, um, down, downtown, a separate one. And more pointedly to your, to your question, like, what Kevin had mentioned, I mean, there's strikes against the building. It's not falling down right now, so it's not like a safety issue, but bringing it up to kinda twenty-first century educational, so you know, like the, if you're gonna be moving these to a central location here, if that's your goal. You know, you're gonna wanna replace the vent system, the hood, the, um, like the sod, all that collection. So there's gonna be a lot of replacement, a lot of updating, that also comes with the dollar sign, like, you know, it has a value to that. Um, and that's where some of the items in, in that, the report did kinda weigh those out, so as you start to add those up, you can kinda, you start to weigh cost and benefit, cause some of these systems that we're replay, talking about replacing. They have a pretty hefty price, they're just replacing them on their own, you know, if it's an exhaust or a vent hood or whatever it may be. Um, but now when it comes to the actual use, the square footage in that vocational wing, when you're talking the egg shop, the wood shop, um, and some of those classroom spaces. You know, the area wasn't necessarily under, undersized, um, and that ultimately comes down to kinda what your use of those spaces are, if you would, like, how you would like to use those, those spaces. Um, so we did, yeah, so we did, uh, I, looks like it's not in this document, but I handed it out, that's kinda space inventory that you guys have. That was just us taking an inventory of your existing spaces and breaking them down. Um, cause we looked at, these next two slides are a couple, just very high level concepts, and I'm gonna preface these next two slides before they get up on this board, that this was obviously done not, you know, in conjunction with you all. This was kind of our best stab, first thoughts at how these things can be fit together. Ultimately, if, you, you know, we went down this path, our, our process, we like to work with you all, work with your staff, work with the school, to really get a, a good understanding of what's needed and right size everything. But these were just kind of our first stab, high level look at, at them. So the, the first, uh, concept that's in there, we went into this one with a goal of, okay, you've got this usable, you've got this footprint of this existing building. Can we fit everything that you need in that footprint? You know, well, even if it would require updating the building, updating the, you know, fixing the exterior of the roof, all these systems, can it fit within this square footage? So with this one, we assumed, there are a couple of things that we assumed, um, with that, and I'll walk through it, uh, pretty briefly. But this is assuming the basement down below is, you know, you're keeping the basement, you have a basement, and the, like the wrestling room, for example, would stay in that, update it, fix it and everything, but utilizing that, that space. Cause this, this, I said, this option was really trying to minimize the restructuring of the building itself, just kinda reusing some of those existing volumes, existing spaces. Um, so those, all the rooms in the basement would kind of remain as they are, be updated, renovated, um, obviously there's some, uh, concerns or issues there, just knowing it's an old locker room, not eighty accessible. So you'd be updating those and everything would be the recommendation. Um, but these, uh, yeah, so just some bullet points there, but this, the layout here is kinda just showing, kinda using that space inventory for those square footages. Showing, you know, the wrestling room, keeping that where it is, creating a new mech, mechanical storage room, just off the exterior. So this is also assuming this garage here would be relocated, um, or so you can have access to, to that area in there. And with that, you can go in and do a lot of that re roofing, um, over in that area while you're getting some of that destructive, um, reconstruction going on. Uh, but there, there is relocating the, well, you could relocate the weight room up to this, the second floor, or, you know, it could, could stay down there. But with that, if you're gonna maintain some of those usable spaces down there, uh, you're gonna want an elevator just to make that accessible, um, to get down there. So we are, we are showing an elevator near kinda the entrance over here, just kind of showing the, the square footage, reworking this entry. Um, and then what's being shown on this floor, so rather than, another option for like the locker rooms down there, if you're talking to, to Jim, and, and, uh, the way the locker rooms are used, they're more so just changing areas. A lot of the competition is going out at the, the armory and whatnot, so I think there is opportunity to reduce the square footage needs of that, the locker rooms, at least at, at this facility here. So you could save some space, um, with that, by just having more of a, a changing space, a place to drop off your belongings and a couple of lockers if needed. Um, so then the rest of these rooms that, you know, it's keeping a similar layout to what you have with classrooms in the exterior, a central hallway, just to maintain some of that natural daylight and whatnot. But this is also, um, this would also be assuming other things listed here, but potentially looking, in order to fit all these items up here, the, the egg shop, the wood shop, the building trades, kinda those pieces. Moving the, uh, center base, cause that's currently up in that area, maybe into one of the underutilized classrooms, uh, like, the, from my understanding, one of the science rooms isn't used. The middle school or high school, science rooms, could potentially be repurposed into the center base and bring it a little closer to the rest of the school as well. Uh, but it would also open up some square footage in that area for moving some of those CTE elements back to this facility. Um, so with that, that's kind of a quick rundown of the first concept, kinda running, uh, getting to, to your question. Uh, the next one is more so more reconstruction, so the next concept will be showing a, um, assuming kind of a blank slate, if you will, up in that corner. Assuming that it, that the vocational wing would be kinda removed and rebuilt, um, from, from scratch. So there are a couple caveats with that, that we did note on here. You know, if you were to assume that it was all gonna be blank slate reconstructed, and you didn't, to prevent the need for that elevator, you don't want the basement, you know, you can do that, it would require quite a bit of fill, to fill that, that basement, which can be pretty spendy, but it's just kinda those pluses and minuses. You wouldn't need an elevator if you don't have the basement, those types of things. Um, but this is just kinda reworking everything, showing, again, keeping the, the wrestling kind of in the, the center area there with the two changing rooms, uh, between that and the gymnasium. Uh, just trying to keep all of that athletic space together. Um, and then up here, pretty similar to the first, uh, concept with the, the fax, the wood shop, egg shop. And then up here, it's actually expanded, giving a little more space for the, like the egg shop, the wood shop, the building trades. And, and with that, since you wouldn't be reusing some of the existing construction, you know, you can make that as tall, the refit as you would like, the building trades, I know, right now they're going, they have three stories where they're at. Two stories is kind of the, what you would like, um, so you could really be more flexible with how tall and how much space you have in there, with something like that. Um, this is showing just an expanded, um, mechanical storage, so again, moving that boiler just in the basement up to the main floor, so you don't have to go down to the basement and everything. So really kind of abandoning that, that existing boiler in the basement. Um, this one does have, uh, so we did take a look also, just knowing that, you know, performing arts was something that has been discussed before, we just wanted to kinda throw it on here as well as just phasing it. So you know, if this was done in the future, the, that could certainly be something done later or. We just wanted to kinda throw it on here as well as just phasing it, so you know, if this was done in the future, that, that could certainly be something done later or not at all. Um, but just to look at more of like a, a proof of concept, if you will, just to show that, how it could fit or where it can fit, uh, on the site. As you can see, it obviously assumes that Second Street would be vacated for that, so this would obviously be done in the, the way, future. But the reason it's placed right here is, you know, you've got your other large assembly spaces kind of in that area, you've got your high school, kinda the main office entry right there, so trying to keep everything and not reworking the layout of the, the school that you've already got going. Um, and, you know, if there was, and I don't know what the plans are, but if there was, I think there's some, this property over here is currently a parking lot, but you know, there's some, if parking was to be, or if other properties were to be looked at, it could become parking, uh, to support that additional space. I think that, and I guess one other item that, these are, again, similar to the first concept, assuming that the, the center base would be kinda relocated to one of those underutilized classrooms in the school, just maximizing the efficiency of the, the space you've already got built, basically. So that's very high level, run through those. Again, this was done without kind of drawn with you guys and, and shredding, so take this with a grain of salt, um, but just something to look at, kinda our first thought.
I've got a question, I don't, how extensive, you, you probably didn't look at this, but how extensive would it be to, um, to ensure that the lower level would be a usable space without the need for, or maybe some pumps would be needed, but strategically placed so that our water issue down there? As I understand it, our wrestling room floor is the same level as the boiler room floor. That doesn't make sense to me, but apparently you go up the same number of steps into that, that long hallway from down.
Down.
Steps, I don't know. Um, the other issue that we've had with, with our, our locker rooms, uh, the drain in the old wood shop, which we don't use, um, any longer, so that's not a big issue. But a lot of those drains are like no longer usable, or they're, or are they having issues? Do, do you tear up the floor quite a bit? Do you do, uh, tiling around the edge of the building in the, in the lower level? What would be needed to, to take care of that?
To mitigate some of the water concerns? I mean, tiling around the building is certainly an option that, uh, would come with a hefty price tag, uh, helping some of that drainage and whatnot. But ultimately, a lot of that water that's inside is stemming back from how it's being handled from the top down. So from the roof, from the drainage around the building, you know, if you're getting it away, if you're internally draining it and connecting it to a sewer, there are the storm sewer system right away, it's gonna prevent some of that water from sitting against the building and pushing itself back in. Because water will, if, if it's got a way in, it will find its way in, it, it's, uh, it's tricky like that.
Gentlemen, what other questions you have for?
I know we threw a lot at you tonight.
Yeah. Thank you for sticking with us.
It's been good.
Oh, it's really good.
Yeah, it's a lot to think about.
Uh, I mean, speaking personally, and I, and I feel comfortable for the board, I mean, this is, this is outstanding, Kevin. I mean, I, I really appreciate the knowledge you bring, and I mean, the photographs and the, the examples there, I mean, just a lot of information given there that I feel is important for us to know, just so we even know that we even have the issues. I mean, again, we come here for a meeting, you know, our staff, everybody's, we're focused on teaching, but the facilities, the long term, we want it here the next one hundred years. I mean, nineteen thirty-nine, when that gym was built, it was a great improvement, and it's, and it's served our community well. We've gotta be thinking more than just next week, next month, you know, next year, we've gotta be thinking long term here also. And I like how, really to be quite frank, you know, uh, Josh, when we started looking at the teaching, again, looking at what they did in nineteen thirty-nine, I don't know if every school back then had a, a, egg shop, or an industrial shop, or, you know, the home ec room. I mean, good that our grandparents back then, maybe even some of our great grandparents were thinking about doing that and it's served the community well. Again, we've gotta be thinking about how we can educate children for the next thirty to forty years.
I wanna ask, in your guys' professional opinion, is it worth trying to salvage that basement? Is it worth putting a bunch of money into elevators, drainage systems?
I appreciate you shaking your head and saying no, because I'm, I'm an attorney and I just went, look, I just did that today in court, where a guy said, mm, I said, well, let the record reflect, he said, no. Okay. I mean, that, that's what we need to hear.
Yeah.
You know, we look, cost per new, cost for the old and fix it. At what point does the scale tell? You know, and it's roofing, HVAC, electrical, I mean, and, and just, and hard to put a number on, on educational adequacy, but I mean, you're, you're, you're in a shop that was built in thirty-nine. I mean, what size cars did we have back then? What?
Right.
We didn't have tables, I mean, everything was hand tools. And now you've got joiners, so, I mean, all sorts of stuff, and, you know, the shop teacher when we were in there, yeah, you know, his electro box, but yeah, but, but when this piece goes, uh, I don't know how we ever figured out last time where the, where the breaker was for this, and it was somewhere, and that's not safe. I mean, but that can be fixed, I mean, you can bring in a new power lead and everything else, but I mean, at what point, I mean, that's where you look, you know, professionally too, at smaller scale, your car, at what point you buy a new one versus keep running the old one? You know, your transmission goes, well, I have some cars, the Tigers going, no bringing.
There comes the point of no return on that.
Right, and, you know, I worked on buildings that, you know, come heck or high water, we are gonna keep the building, and we're gonna fix it because it's a mainstay in the community. Fine, at least we know that, how we can plan for it and get it done. So, a lot of it'll be, you know, just, you know, I can run the numbers and show you that it's not, not a good thing to keep it, but there's that sentiment side too and everything else that.
And I will say, kinda to that point, kind of like, you know, if we were to work with you guys the next step, we would, kind of our, our educational adequacy planning would kind of hit on some of that, or kinda get a temperature of, you know, gauging the teachers, the staff, the community, could put out community inputs and services. Because like Kevin said, some, some communities, the building, it's got an emotional tie to it, because it's been there. But if you, you know, if you know that upfront, it's something you can work with, but if it's really not there, you, you know, a little more, more open to the options that you can, you can go with. But that's kinda part of our, our process, is really to help understand that also.
Quick, I've worked with a school in Iowa, failed five referendums. We worked with them, I took the committee, I took the board, we took them out, showed them what the building was. They said, why was this never done before? We never knew the condition it was. It passed seventy percent. You gotta show people, people have to put their hands on it, they gotta see it, you gotta see it, to know what you're talking about, instead of, it's better than pictures.
On your planning and stuff, how far out are you seeing where you can lock in your equipment, materials? Is that something that's kinda like changing when you're trying to put a program together, are you able to?
Regarding the, like the, the construction materials?
Yeah, construction material, boilers, whatever.
So that's.
Is that something, when you do plan, you need to move on right quick?
Not, not typically, um, like you're, so when we're doing your initial planning, that's gotta, you know, you got your, so kinda, just to break it down a little bit, you do your kinda pre-design or schematic, where you're actually planning, meeting with the user groups or stakeholders, whether that's the teachers and everything. Then you do the drawing portion, actual construction documents, before you put it out to bid.
Yeah, bids, bids is planning.
Right, so usually, typically, you're not gonna lock in materials during that design phase, it is kind of at the end. You know, if you're working with like a construction manager throughout the process, sometimes they can at least keep their ear in the ground and see, you know, how things are going. Um, because for example, one project we are working on, not, not a school, but down, uh, it's actually a highway facility, working on a pre-engineered metal building. And even those, right now, the lead time for that material is, you order it last week, you wouldn't get it till January, February. But the CM that we were working with, he was like, hey, I've got, you know, they had someone they were working with, if we get our order in now, we can at least lock it in, we'll know we'll get it by November at that time, um, so it's.
We, along that, uh, uh, concept of the one, one point six and the heating system or, or whatever. I guess what I'm after is, when you give us a engineer's estimate, then we go to mid-process and we're trying to budget here. Are you comfortable, have you seen your estimates in line with your bidding?
Up until two months ago, yeah.
Well, then you're saying no.
Right, because it's, it's anybody's game right now, and, and we, our electrical division, I talked to the, uh, main guy in our electrical division today, he calls three times a day to get new updates on copper. It's changing that fast. There's some materials, you can order it, but you won't know what the price is until you get it, if you want it.
And so kinda in regards to that, I know from talking to you guys, you know, like the, the mechanical is more of an immediate need with that boiler and everything, and there are some options that we laid out, and even some other options that we talked about that weren't included in that, that report. But to essentially get you through, so you're not throwing money away, but get you through that pet, planning process, knowing you need to address it right now, it could be reused kinda down the road. Um, because, you know, the planning process, construction, ultimately, you won't be starting construction for over a year, if you were doing an actual building project, for over a year, by that time you plan, draw it, get everything going. By that time, ideally, the market's a little more leveled, um, at that time. Uh, but obviously, a year out is not gonna address an immediate need. So there are some options that we can, that we've talked about that would help kinda solve that now, and allow for planning for the future at the same time.
Because back to the boiler, I mean, we know what kind of boiler we'd recommend now for the future for that building, yeah, and you could go out and buy it now if you want. If you know who's gonna go through, yeah. There is a certain small group of type boilers that, yeah, we highly recommend.
But structurally, structurally, you said the egg wing is, that is good, it's just everything that's inside it that's mainly.
Everything we saw, you know, surface wise, yeah, I didn't see any cracks in foundations, um, balls with, no, I didn't see anything that, that scared us at all structurally in any part of any, of the building, except in the, in the, um, the old coal room and some of that, it was so moist in some of those back rooms and the beams that were supporting some of that, and you're driving on top of some of those areas, there was a steel beam that showed quite a bit of rust. Um, Matt, Matt had mentioned a few in the report, I believe you have that in the report on a couple structural items, but, no, the building's, you know, it's pretty solid.
So square footage wise, how efficient are we down there? What is our efficiency per square foot compared to the industry standard, you know?
I don't know what you, you mean, utility wise and that, I don't.
No, no, I mean, just the floor space, what, what are we utilizing?
Oh, golly, um, you've got a lot of square footage in that boiler room for a huge boiler. That boiler now, that load that that boiler's producing, that boiler now is probably the size of two of these science tables. And right now, that boiler's probably from here to there and from here to you away, I mean, it's, it's a beast. There used to be a pair of them down there. It's a big, big boiler. But that's basically what it paid for.
Yeah.
Are you talking about like the size of the egg classroom?
That, that's what I'm getting at, is the actual floor, the square footage of the floor space that we're educating the kids in. How efficient are we, or inefficient are we?
So when it comes to those shop spaces, I mean, I, I, the shop spaces are, they're interesting, they're a little different than classrooms where it is, you know, more so square for, for student, you know, depending on the shop program, depending on the, like the equipment that you guys have or would like to have, that kinda makes a difference on how much space you need. I mean, what you've, what you've got, it's a little tight, I think, in, in the egg shop right now, but I think that's also because of some of the existing equipment, like that big overhead vent hood, you know, it's a big beefy item that, those other ones in the, up in your other building, a lot smaller, so there are, so a lot of the equipment has reduced in size, can be a little more efficient when it comes to the, the equipment itself.
I think your curriculum is based basically on the size of the room.
Right.
You could do so much more with, you know, space.
Yep.
If you had the staff and the budget for more, you know, it's, yeah.
And so that's where, like, we, when, when we work with, with districts on that, we meet with you and your staff and your school, we just, kinda what your vision is for that space, for that program. Do you want it to grow? Is it providing what you want it to, or is there more you wanna do? Because then that will dictate kinda the amount of space that would be needed for each of those.
In your egg classroom, you wanna bring in a full-size combine to be able to drop it off in there and have the kids look at it. You can bring old combine in that door, let alone, only pickup probably.
Yeah, that, that to me is the biggest issue, I mean, I'm a local attorney in town, if I bring somebody into practice with me, I don't say, well, we're only gonna work on the books today. Nobody, nobody looks at the books, I'm the one guy that looks at the books, because I'm fifty. Uh, just today, the young guy is twenty-one years old, and he's a first-year law student, I said, you want me to show you where the books are to find us? He says, no, I'd really rather not, let me just have my laptop. I mean, it's, it's a different way, and that's how they do it, and we need to be up to speed.
Right.
That's where I feel we're letting, we have an obligation to the agricultural community, where they're gonna get their employees, you know, to get ourselves up to speed so that we can give them the best education coming out here. What they did at the CTE down on Main Street, where they built a three-level, that, that never was through my mind, I would never have envisioned that. And now how they're able to teach people plumbing and electrical and, I mean, I'm impressed, we couldn't do that here.
No.
Well, gentlemen, we probably better, uh, let you guys, uh, kick out and get the next group in. I, again, thank you very much, Kevin and Josh, I mean, this was outstanding, uh, heck of an education session, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for having us.
Thanks, guys.
If you guys do have any follow-up questions, feel free to shoot them over. Uh, I don't know, best way to go through Jim and send them to me, or however, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
Send them through Jim, so we can at least have a point of contact on everything and keep it funneled right.
All right.
We'll go ahead and we'll just have a short break here, so everybody can get up.
Okay.
Leave the restroom and, uh, get the next group in, and we'll be back here in a few minutes. Back with Bearcat TV, are we good to go? All right, so we had ISG here earlier, now we have Architectural Incorporated, Patty Munson, Travis Sickmiller, Webster grads from what year?
Oh, gosh, you're gonna make me say it, nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty.
Let me think, nineteen ninety.
Nineteen ninety, all right, so we appreciate you guys being here today, and, uh, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, and if we got questions, we'll chime on in.
Yeah, please do. Um, thank you for allowing Travis and I to come in and present our thoughts, uh, to you guys. Um, as you know, uh, we've had an opportunity to meet with the, uh, Buildings and Browns Committee and, um, members of the administration team, along with some other stakeholders at the school here, some of the teachers, to get an input from them as well, and that was really helpful as we worked through some options. Um, kind of looking at the existing school building here and the existing site, and, um, obviously, you guys are aware of the site constraints we have here, you know, just kind of, uh, looking at this career in tech or this vocational wing, what can we do with that? That would be an opportunity to possibly de- demolish that and build something new there. Uh, that's a nineteen fifties building there. Uh, also, on the south end of the site, uh, looking at some opportunities to maybe build a career in tech education wing there, or classrooms, other, you know, other opportunities as well. But we're really kind of constricted by the site, um, so we're looking at different opportunities of how we could implement your ideas there. Just, uh, flip this over. So after meeting with, um, the group several times, um, we looked at different design options, and we kind of, everybody kind of seemed to focus in on, on this one. Um, so what, what we're showing here is kind of a new, um, auxiliary gym, uh, fine arts theater up here on the north end that would be built where the vocational wing is right now. Uh, we'd have a shared lobby, some changing rooms and a scene shop. Um, and it's kind of nice, you can, you know, with these two spaces, you can share changing rooms, um, restrooms, public facilities like that, and the lobby, uh, so that works pretty well there. Down on the south end here, we created a new technical education wing. Um, so we're showing the wood lab, metal lab, ag lab, and family and consumer science down here, and associated classrooms. There was a lot of debate on wrestling. So one, one option we talked about was converting the, um, existing auxiliary gym into a wrestling room. Um, I think there's a lot of, well, there's going to be a lot of discussion about that probably. So we also just looked at another option of dropping it in down here on the south end of the tech wing. Another area that, uh, we talked about quite a bit was the administration offices. Um, right now, uh, high school is over here, um, business office and, uh, is in this area with the athletic director, and the elementary and middle school offices over in this area. Um, for some efficiencies, we looked at combining the, um, business office and the high school office into one administration wing. Um, by doing that, we can also put the guidance in there, um, athletic director, business office, and just kind of share some resources there. That works pretty well. Talking, uh, with Mr. Black, you know, we think there are some scheduling things we could do so that we don't have to rebuild these three classrooms. We can kind of by scheduling, um, make use of the classrooms that we have, so that's a good thing to be able to do. Um, let's see. And then over in the elementary, uh, office and middle school, we would be expanding that, doing a small addition, adding some more office, another office, uh, larger conference room, um, bigger reception area. So the, the, this, what's really nice about this plan is that it works really well for phasing. So you could do some or all of the plan as, as you would see fit or prioritize.
Meaning that if you were to start on the southern end of the property, you could do whatever building you wanted there without interfering with any classroom activities?
Right, so you could, you could build this whole CTE wing, leave this existing vocational wing until this is complete, move these folks down here, tear this down, and start to build the new gym and theater space. So it's a good plan as far as phasing, I think it's a pretty good master plan for you guys to have in place so that, you know, if you can only do a portion of the work, you still have a plan to get to where you want to be in the future with the fine arts and, um, possibly a auxiliary gym.
Okay.
Um, Travis, do you want to maybe chat a little bit about mechanical systems, whether...
Sure, um, you know, the, the, uh, I've been involved with a number of projects, we had to hook them all up, kind of get the dates, I mean, we, we've been involved with a lot of your work, um, thank you for that. Um, so there's been a project where we added the chiller, you know, and got cooling to this two thousand three, um, edition. So we added the chiller at that point. We added cooling to your middle school, the rooms that didn't have it. We added condensing units to some air handlers that we had put in prior in the elementary. We added a kitchen unit and we also replaced the unit that fed the elementary. So, you know, this has been a multiple project to get air conditioning and update things at the school district. We weren't involved with the middle school, however, we tied into it. So the middle school itself has its own hydronic system. This two thousand three edition, I think it got constructed and wrapped up in two thousand five, is a separate hydronic system. They all go to that old boiler room. These two buildings come out of that old boiler room, and that old boiler room is the original foundation of a prior school that, I mean, the walls are real thick, you've got a new lid. But there's a lot of water infiltration, a lot of corrosion. It's not ideal to put a new boiler in there, and that's kind of why we've, you know, kicked the can down the road with the one steam boiler that you currently have. And it's steam because everything in the old school that came down was steam. You know, but when you do new, you convert to hot water. It's easier to control temperature. So we got hot water in the middle school and the high school, but we got steam in the old VOTAC. So to get rid of steam, it's expensive to re-pipe, so for an older facility, we didn't spend the money to re-pipe the VOTAC. Not sure how long it was gonna be there. So if the VOTAC comes down, then really you're left with hot water, and then whatever you build here would go to hot water heat. And it was always a challenge what to do with that lower boiler room. We didn't wanna spend a bunch of money, put in a new steam boiler and hot water boilers. So the earlier discussion was a modular boiler roof, you know, that could be moved and maybe it would be built upon grade level. But there was an idea thrown out at the last, or one of the meeting meetings, that, you know, if space was carved out for admin area, that maybe we could take over part of that middle school admin area.
For a boiler.
For a boiler range, which would be ideal because then to provide installed boilers, get them piped, get them started up by fall is doable. I mean, it really solves a lot of issues, and we did actually throw some boilers into a floor plan there.
And this is just kind of a summary report of everything we've generated thus far.
Patty, the boiler room layout?
I think it's in about, let's see, page seven.
So really, we basically took the walls out of that admin area and threw in hot water boilers big enough to handle the middle school, the high school, and whatever you build here for additions. And you can see there's quite a bit of room left over, you know, and I know storage is always an issue. We don't show chill water pumps with a chiller up in there, but really we're only talking needing a little bit more space and only showing that. Those boilers are, two of them would be like a bolt crook boiler are the best feedback, you know, we don't wanna put something in that's high maintenance, just, you know, and because that is a concern, every boiler is up to the boarders, best boilers, but I don't know. I listen to the feedback, and then we got one high efficiency boiler. So you can see that space does work pretty good for updated boilers, and it's centrally located for both of these, all the piping origins there.
Yeah, so it makes for pretty easy times to, to need to see the piping in. And I think Travis, you mentioned also that would be, you know, those would be sized to accommodate future expansion as well.
So in your opinion, what is the condition of our boiler?
You know, it's...
You don't have to be politically correct, just speak.
I mean, it's a concern because you could spend a lot of money if that thing were to go down. It's hard to know and look at the inside of the boiler, you know, than looking at the outside of it, but it's, it's old, it's probably inefficient, it's way oversized, and it's your own boiler. It's a concern. We do have a small steam boiler that was used that we had gotten a good deal down there in an emergency mode, but then there's more work put back to tie that in, you know, to reserve the VOTAC. And then also you would have to put in hot water boilers that are on the shelf and you'd be out of school. You'd be shut down for weeks until that heating system got updated. It wouldn't be an easy thing if it were to fail. So Joel, just, I mean, it's just been, it's time, put it that way. I don't think you wanna keep gambling, you know, that it's gonna continue to last. There's some efficiency there that you gained.
Sure. Cause we would go away from the steam, converting it back to hot water.
That's right.
The thing is cyclone. It's so oversized that it runs, shuts off, and you're losing heat out of the stack, you know, from it just going through its stages. Do you have any idea what kind of condition the piping is in, in the nineteen fifties wing or thirty nine wing, whatever we wanna call it?
I don't, you know, there's steam traps that have to be maintained. Typically steam pipings, I mean, it cleans itself. It's the steam condensate that you may have to replace, so if, that would be the only thing that would fail, and then, you know, you'd have to spend money on it, you know, and fix things to maintain it. There is another option. We could, you know, we could put in hanging unit heaters in the VOTAC. I mean, gas fired hanging unit heaters get you by, and then you wouldn't need the steam, and you could put in hot water boilers and get that tied in. But we've done it in emergency mode when your boiler's down. But, you know, and you've got a lot of rooms there that you're spending money on unit heaters. But if you had a game plan with the VOTAC, you know, down the road...
We could look at different options to keep that.
That's right. Yeah. If you, if you were keeping the VOTAC, but that's where the expensive part comes in, is converting from steam to hot water, cause then you gotta replace all the piping and all the heating equipment. So it's hard to convert to hot water until you spend money on the VOTAC or whatever else is there.
Maybe it's too hard to guess, but I mean, when we went from, when we did that LED project, Larry, I think that was your first year on the board, maybe when we did that, or second? Then one of the best things that we did is, it's been a significant cost savings. We keep track of that. We're pretty happy with that. Very nice. When you think about, so steam, like the last group says, you're heating water to twelve plus, obviously you get to steam, then on a hot water boiler, you're only maybe one thirty, one forty, maybe one sixty. Any estimate as to what you've seen with, you know, for us? I mean, our natural gas bill and our electric bill, we pay Northwestern Energy, is a significant portion of our budget. Any idea of what we could be saving in cost savings down the road there?
Yeah, on that boiler, I mean, you'd probably potentially save twenty percent of your gas, you know, but gases getting cheaper. I mean, it's been pretty economical compared to what it used to be. It has to be a buck thirty a thermo one point, but it's like fifty three cents a thermo. I did run a little energy analysis. I think it's in the...
It is something there like that, and I didn't have a chance to...
So do you, I mean, maybe I don't...
No, that's fine.
No, we wanna hear it.
Yeah.
So in the past, I had analyzed energy consumption in builds, and it was two thousand thirteen. And actually, that was, that's what made the report is your two thousand thirteen data that we had. So you can, you can kind of see, the top chart shows that that's the energy consumption, energy utilization index. And we've been actually creating our own database of all the schools that we've looked at. We've got a lot more than what's on here, but we just get wrong. A gentleman that just started two weeks ago working on this. So energy utilization index, you were towards the higher end of the schools that we had in. However, you've since then updated lights and, and, and then the cost per square foot per year, you were kind of middle of the road. And it's probably because, you know, gas prices are pretty economical, natural gas. Some of these other schools then had natural gas available, you know, it's propane, or fuel oil, that sort of thing. So what I found, I made some calls, actually, just recently here and got updated data, and back in two thousand thirteen, your operating cost per square foot was seventy seven cents, what you got, what I have on that report. Now what's happened, you've shifted the, actually, the gas has gone down. You're more efficient on your gas consumption, cost per square foot, and your electric has gone up a little bit. Even though you did the lighting, what we found is the average cost per kilowatt hour was seven cents, six point nine, back in two thousand fourteen, now at average ten cents per kilowatt hour. So I mean, the electric rates have gone up, they're allowed to charge and they get that approved. So your savings that you created in lighting is keeping even with your operating costs in twelve fourteen.
Which is pretty good.
We're seventy years down the road.
Yeah.
So that's good. Now, the other thing out there is more efficient boilers. You know, we get rid of that old big thing and we can have some savings there. That would be... So I guess we're finding the energy utilization index that would be the top chart. Back in, sorry, back in two thousand fourteen, the Webster School was eighty kilobits per square foot per year. Now you're down to sixty two point nine four. So that lighting has helped. There's must be some updates in the controls. You're using less energy, unfortunately, the cost is on the, you know, is impacted too with the utility rate.
Well, we're... Well, we're... So it's what we can control.
That's right.
We're doing well. We can't control the rates.
That's right. And so we're gonna continue to develop this, you know, and we're gonna use it to help schools make decisions, and we got a lot more to do, but you guys have made improvements and that's helped. Because if you wouldn't have made them, you're probably talking thirty percent higher operating cost, you know. Just because you wouldn't have carved out the way we've come along, and then the rates have gone up.
Thirty percent, that's almost the cost of one of our, you know, starting teachers.
Close, yeah. That's right. I mean, it's...
It's important to develop for schools.
And I think the other thing Travis, you mentioned that as an option, since this has a two pipe system in it now, we could look at a little different system over here with DX cooling that would allow us to, you know, if you needed heating in these buildings, we could, you know, we could still get cooling over here, even though that's a two pipe system.
That's right. This was back in two thousand three, and we actually had an alternate to update the steam boilers back then. It was alternate number nine. Two thousand three, it was just, I mean, I was just into my career, and, you know, my initial thought was let's do shield, do something really efficient, but the budget didn't allow us to do that. And so this is a two pipe system, so you're either running hot water or you're running chill water. Well, our concern would be is if you're, if you need to heat your classrooms and you can't serve your chiller, that's why DX cooling, like you got in the elementary that we're doing over here, you can, you pack in the theater or you pack in the gym and you have cooling with refrigeration cooler, not a chiller again. So we can only do a two pipe heating supply and return, and we beam it up with condensing and a cooler. So then you can operate however, and this you continue to operate how you're operating this. So you wouldn't wanna have another chiller in high access incineration, because you would end up needing some heat here for the kids, you know, and all of a sudden you gotta either have to pack it in.
So you have both of these spaces, you know, you could have five hundred people in there. The theater's designed for five hundred, and if you, you know, fill that up with leechers going out, like ten rows would fit in there, you could get five to six hundred people in there on leechers if you desire to do that. So any questions on what we're seeing on board here?
Really, I got to be honest with you, Patty, when you first showed, showed me the plan, it's impressive. I mean, not the way my mind would think, you know. Originally, I thought it was gonna be a necessity, then eventually it was shot to the east, you know, in order for something to work, and it's clear when you lay it out like that, that that's a, that is an excellent plan. Wait for the use of the space for our footprint. And I think that CTE, to me, that's the biggest piece. I'd like to be able to get the CTE off Main Street.
Sure.
Get it back here on campus, keep the students here on campus during the school day as much as possible. And to be quite frank, that CTE's gonna be the biggest employer within Webster and Gate County and the greater area for a long time to come, and I think we, we've gotta hit that. So that's why I think that's important, the way you have it in there, and maybe can be phased in quicker rather than later.
Sure. And then, you know, with this layout too, it works well with your parking, you know, all of your parking is kind of over here on the east side of the building. You've got a little lot up here, but what we've done is, you know, with this entryway, we created a new kind of activities entrance, if you will. And also, you know, you could come in and go up the stairs, or there is an accessible ramp on the side of the building, so you can, anybody can go in this door. Kind of the same thing we're doing in the parking lot, which we talked about at one of our meetings, it's, you know, why not, why not raise the grade in there and get an on-grade entry? So that's kind of what we started to show here now too, you know, building up this lot, creating a new administrative and high school entry right here, a new secured entry point. So again, on-grade for, for everybody. Along with that, we were proposing, and I'll, you've maybe seen it in the brochure, but we'll put it up on the board here too. We're proposing kind of a new entry element and canopy that has to say, hey, everybody, this, this is an entry, so people know where to go.
Would all accesses be ADA?
Not all, but they don't all have to go.
I know.
Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, that would be part of this as well to convert this to an accessible entrance. Right now, there are stairs inside the vestibule there. So I think that would be important to make that an accessible entry. We kind of talked about the center base, the sped programs, middle school and high school. And the last time we talked, we were thinking, you know, what if we kind of grouped these together over here? That way they could have a, center base could actually have its own entry if you wanted to do that. But they could also share some things. Right now, they're kind of lacking the life skills portion of the program where they have kitchenette, washer dryer, those kind of things. And we could fit that in right over here. And we could fit that in right over here, and it could be shared by middle school, center base, and then high school. So, it's nice when you can kind of share those programs and not have to go more than one location, so. So, yeah, this would be accessible, accessible, this would be accessible. I think we could make, you know, these would be pretty close to it and that. And this would be, this one is still shown as stairs, but we would work through that. And our goal is always to make as many accessible entries as we can, it's just a better situation for, for everybody, so.
We toured your facility on Main Street, you know, with the, the CTE. Really excited with what you got. I mean, we'd love to help you continue that, and then we could get some more engineers and architects to graduate right here.
I agree.
Or the other things, I mean, so, we talked, the modeling of a building by Arcane is three-dimensional. So, I mean, we throw our stuff in there, it could be a good classroom learning environment to utilize now, and we can talk about it, you know. We'd love to team up with you guys and continue.
For small donation, you can have a room, Travis. We can talk later.
There's one right here, it says future Travis.
Yeah, there we go, wow.
So, yes.
Yeah, we're looking for it to do, so.
So, so we do show a couple of, we've got four rooms labeled as future, just based on some discussions, you know, maybe an engineering lab, maybe a health EMT lab. We've got an opportunity for a couple more general classrooms here, kind of converting this existing high school office to, to a classroom. So, I think the plan lays out pretty well and still, you know, allows for growth down here in the future if needed. I guess, you know, the other discussion we had was kind of what would happen if we moved athletics down to the, to the armory? A new auxiliary gym and. And the locker rooms, et cetera. So, you, you can kind of see here, we dropped in the auxiliary gym, wrestling room, and a couple of locker rooms, with another opportunity for a future locker room, a little bit of storage. What we could do is create a connecting link right here from the, I think it's, it was one of the old locker rooms, a small one. Just create a connecting link there, lobby, gym, wrestling, locker rooms, storage. So, it kind of starts to fill up that site, obviously. And, and you know, one thing I think that, that you guys should really think about is, you know, when you have all your facilities on one campus, you really get used by every day. I mean, people will think, hey, let's go down to the theater, we can do this function there, and you don't have to bus anybody. Same with, you know, your gym space. If it's on-site, it's gonna get used a lot more than if, if you have to bus people or, you know, they have to get down there on their own. So, I think that's one good thing to think for you guys to think about. So, yeah, that was just kind of, I thought I'd throw that together, just so you could see how we did on the armory site. And I, I know the city owns that site and you guys kind of manage it, so that would be a detail that would have to be worked out as far as, you know, building there. I guess just quickly to give you an idea of what this stuff could look like, and then we can talk about the front stuff. So, just kind of an overview of the building, and I think you can see that in your book here too. But this would be the career and tech wing down here. We started to show this new entry canopy that kind of invites people to the main entry door. We're proposing adding a new enclosed stair here where the original high school entry was. Along with that, we could actually totally get rid of that ramp if we wanted to, since we're providing some other accessible entrances. Start to see the forms of the auxiliary gym and locker rooms, changing rooms here. Again, those, those spaces could be shared between the gym and the theater as changing rooms and dressing rooms. So, it's kind of a nice shared use again. And then the theater is kind of dropped in right here, and this would be kind of the image of the high school entry.
When you, when you were saying, just, you mentioned about that entrance right there, the old center. Yeah, so, are you saying it possibly just, you would get rid of that one, or you would keep it, or just get rid of the?
Get rid of the ramp.
Ramp, that you still have the steps, and that's what you're saying?
We need to maintain that, that's it.
Okay.
So, we could, we could get rid of the ramp, but just kind of build a new steering brochure, so it's all inside the building. I know that's kind of, kind of a big mess issue for, for the guys, so. It's kind of another image of, you know, that's high school entry, I mean, high school entry, kind of looking towards the technical end wing. And then this would be something that at the elementary, middle school entry, add a new entrance, entry canopy again, that sort of thing. Just some options of what it could look like.
I really like that, that rendition, I mean, it really puts into perspective this, again, that CTE South Wing, how it would fit on the campus.
Yeah, and you'd have nice access, you know, for, from Second Street there. Pretty well, I think, for those folks. And then we have created this image for the past project, the previous study that we did for you. This is an option of what the Fine Arts Center could look like. Kind of just got a little nerd out there, but, you know, that's a, that's a five-hundred-seat Fine Arts Center. Very similar to what we did over in Ipswich, if any of you guys have been there at all.
Could the, the Fine Arts Center and the auxiliary gyms that are up there in that northeast corner, could they be phased in?
Actually, they could, yeah. You could easily kind of build the lobby, the gym, the changing rooms, and do the theater later, or vice versa. You could build the theater, changing rooms, and fill in with the gym later. So, I think this is a pretty flexible plan, you know, based on your budget. You guys consider to prioritize things and kind of identify what, what you could pull first. Let's see, you guys have any questions on any of these items, or any other questions right now?
Can we just run over the boiler part again, like if we were to do the boiler first before any of the other things? How, what were you gonna, what would we do with that?
Sure. This will help, I'll see what's planned.
So, so really, if we were to take some space in here, we could put new hot water boilers set up and handle this middle school and your two thousand three, I call it, high school. With, and take over that, and you'd have redundancy, you know, we'd have more than one boiler. So, you could do that right away, then what we're down to is, we still have steam for this. And we wouldn't want to use that whole boiler for just that whole, that small boiler. You know, we're really oversized then, so we either gotta put in, if you know you're gonna keep this VOTAC, we could look at a different system. Maybe it's furnaces, you know, force, you know, natural gas heat, not hydronics, you know. Otherwise, we gotta, you know, it'll be a fair amount to get a plumber involved to take hot water supply and return there.
So, if, you know, if we just wanted to do the boiler first, and then would if that was there for another year or two?
So, so we do have that small steam boiler down in there, that could do just about that. And we got a deal on it from a prior school that was, that was surplus. Now, it's been sitting there for a little bit, but we could, we could, we'd vent it. We'd have to spend a little bit of money on it for right now, and we'd be down to one boiler for the VOTAC still, you know, that boiler. Or we could leave the big one as possibly a backup, you know, should that small one fail. It wouldn't be the, the most efficient thing to cycle of that big one if we have to rely on it. But, I did project some of the cost to get that steam boiler piped, you know, and I think it was, you gotta, you know, we might spend in that up to twenty thousand dollars to finish that and tie it in, because you gotta get somebody to weld and tie it in. But that is an option.
That's less than our annual maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. So, that could be an option. It's hard to, it was a good boiler. It's been sitting in high mid-dee for the last few years, all that is a concern, but. So, that, or we put in natural gas hanging unit heaters, or some, you know, combination of hanging unit heaters in the shop and forced air, awesome answer, but. Yeah, otherwise, we'd have to put a steam boiler here and pipe, you know, further, you know, and we're spending money on a steam boiler then, that isn't quite as efficient as a hot water boiler. But, that is an option. So, if you take some space from the administrative office, the business office, is, is taking up much of the space? Half the space, a part of the space? It's like an immediate, so.
So, I think it was those two offices, right Travis?
Yeah.
So, we're, we were looking at just these two offices, gym.
Okay.
So, you know, in the future, kind of that new construction line would be about right through here. So, what we were thinking is that, well, we'd like to place them somewhere where they could live forever and not have to move them again in the future when you might decide to build more. So, thinking that, you know, if you wanted to maintain this office, these two folks could actually shift over here maybe, and we could get the boilers and equipment in there that we need for immediate need.
And, and there's equipment down there that would, you know, if we moved it out of, I'm gonna say the hole, you know, it would allow us, I mean, there's that steam boiler that we purchased that's down there that could be tied in with the same pipe and that goes to VOTAC. So, we're basically not gonna rely on the old boiler, but we rely on this one that we sell at the terminal school. It'd be more reliable probably than the old one, the old one could possibly sit there as a backup. But, and, but the boilers in here would be big enough to eventually get rid of that and take over whatever square foot you have.
So, you're telling us that we can't put in a new hot water boiler and heat that old CTE wing because of the piping?
That's right, it's, it's a steam pipe, one big supply, small steam condensate. Hot water is two decent-sized pipes, you know, that's. And then each of the units that does the heat is rated for steam, you know, so you gotta change that equipment out if you wanna generate that water. So, there's, that's where the cost comes into play is, this equipment is only rated for steam, you know, in this. And so, that's where the expense comes in. And, you know, plumbing costs are one of the biggest trades, you know.
Well, to be honest with you, I mean, that whole vocational wing, unfortunately, the other costs, you know, as the last group said, they're red, you know, when it comes to electrical. I mean, they showed us pictures of, you know, boxes that you can't buy, except if you go, like he said, on the, literally the black market, you can't find it. You replace, he said cloth, didn't he say taping? I guess that's not accepted, not usually what we do with electrical work anymore. The roof, there's so many other expenses, how much money do you want to keep investing in it? That's, that's where I, that's my big concern, it's the sum cost.
That's usually the problem, and you still have a building that's, you know, the walls are just basically walls, there's no insulation there or anything. So, you, you know, you can do some things on the inside of the building, but, you know, electrical, I mean, one of the comments from somebody that's teaching in that wing is, I, you know, I only have four outlets in my room. You know, in this day and age, that's pretty hard to function in a room with four outlets, with all the technology and everything that we have nowadays, so. I mean, the cost can really, you're absolutely right, you can really start to add up when you start changing all those things.
I, I think by being able to take some of this space really helps with costs, not spending money twice. And not, you know, putting boilers, you know, in a harsh environment, that sort of thing, so. I, I think the phasing, you know, works too, the chemical electrical, I mean, there's a lot of benefits to the layout that Patty proposed.
Well, let's hit that then on the layout Patty, 'cause I mean, again, you know, we can talk about, you know, what would it cost to replace that outlet or replace that box, but still, our number one job here is to educate.
Right, right.
That, that CTE wing, I, I do think it's an issue that we can't bring in, you know, any agricultural equipment realistically. I mean, that, you know, again, our egg, shop teacher says, if you wanna weld here, you gotta open the garage door and make sure the wind's out of the right direction. That's, that's not what we need, we gotta update it. So, how, if we said that our priority is to replace the CTE wing and then to make our facility the most manageable, you know, electrical, mechanical, across the board, what, what are you seeing, how do we go about that, Patty?
As far as kind of concentrating on this wing, you mean?
Yeah, because really, that's, that is the focus of, you know, the education, I mean, where the rubber hits the road.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it would be very easy to, to add on this wing, you know, even if you left everything else, you know, you could add this wing if we could do the, you know, do the boiler room, and, you know, generally, we'll have some air handlers up here to serve the wood lab, metal lab, basically serve this whole wing. You know, we could have some units up here. Yeah, it'd be very easy to do that as, even as a standalone project with, you know, with the boiler project. And that, like you said, that's kind of what's nice about this, you can, you really can do that with almost any piece of this plan. You could pick this up if you wanted, you could, you know, pick off one or two of the, you know, you could do this chunk if you wanted. You know, you can kind of pick and choose really what, what you would like to tackle first, and, and like I said, it's just priorities for you guys. And, and then it's, you know, the fact that you, you wanna be kind of thoughtful about what you're doing so that you don't hinder yourself in the future from continuing to develop and add to your facility.
I, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of this idea, but the question I could see being asked, let's say our focus was to improve the CTE wing, okay? So, we said we wanted to do that south piece first, at the same time, we wanted to update our boiler and everything to get it done. And we just said, all right, the, the old vocational wing, we're just gonna mouthball until we, we wanted to. And I want to be clear, I'm not in favor of this. Would you be? Would you be able to still, and you just said, we're gonna keep the wrestling room where it's at, we're gonna keep our weight room where it's at. Could you heat that then with what you propose, or would we still have to do something with steam then? Is that, is that hot water heater, or is that steam?
In the wrestling room?
Yes. So no matter what, you gotta do something to fix that basement and the condensation and everything else we've got in there, problem. Okay.
You'd have to live with that condition down there until you made that next move to do something with your VOTAC. And you've got that one boiler that we salvaged, that would be, I, I think, that's why we bought it. I would just look at getting an updated price to vent it, tie it in.
And I, I know as, you know, just based on our discussions, you guys have a lot of things you're still trying to iron out, you know, weddings, where should it be, you know, just a lot of different pieces like that to think about, but. Like I said, I, I just, you have a lot of flexibility in the plan that we've put together.
You know, these plans kind of hit all of the, I've got a list of, you know, some of the problem areas that we feel we have. Number one's the boiler issue, we're addressing that. CTE, Form and Arts, this is addressing that, we can take and add and delete from it as we want. The high school entrance, we're addressing that, you know, we gotta address the wrestling room, weight room, we're addressing that. You know, the basketball court shortage, that's in here, you know, and as you sit here and you look at this, you just start, well, we could twist this, turn that, you know, how do we, how do we make this all fit? And that's, you know, at this point, we, we have had a lot of ideas thrown at us, and we're gonna just have to try to sort through them here and, and.
I'm gonna steal Larry's question probably, what would be a timeframe on this? I mean, Patty, I mean.
To get started?
Yeah, let's say we said, all right, we, we're gonna start moving forward, we gotta start putting more work into this, and we're gonna go with, you know, some combination of option one or two, you know, what's our timeframe?
Well, I, I mean, I think we, you know, you guys would probably want to get to a building committee together of probably, you know, some teachers, a couple board members, maybe some people from the community, wanna work that out, but it's always nice to get a, have a cross section of people, but I think we'd want to get, you know, probably start with, kind of firming up the plan a little bit, you know, in June, July, we could. I, I think I heard we'd like to get, you know, have it available for bidding, you know, get it, get it advertised in February, and we could sure do that, that'd be no problem.
Okay.
Gentlemen, what other questions do you have?
So we could look at some costs.
Costs.
Yeah, that's what we want to hit you up for again.
That'll be.
So I think here on page thirteen, we started to block out, you know, some costs, and, and we can maybe just kind of run down this byline item. You know, demolition of this existing technical, mainly we're working out about four hundred thousand for that, so that's a, you know, that's a decent sized number just to tear down a building.
Does that include, like hauling in the field to bring everything up to ground level, or to the?
That's down in another number down below, but, so that's just kind of getting rid of, getting rid of that. Then for new construction, so this first one is really option one, kind of all inclusive, you know, just if you did everything that we're showing here. The CTE wing, you know, phase one would be about twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand square feet. You know, adding the theater, gym, locker rooms, et cetera, total new construction would be about fifty-three thousand square feet. For the theater, we have added some theatrical equipment, rigging, drapes, sound system, lighting. Got that included in there for about two hundred and fifty thousand. That's kind of based on a project we did a couple of years ago, and increased the, you know, the costs based on what we've seen over the last couple of years. Remodeling, a little bit over in administration of the elementary middle school office. Remodeling this administrative area here. High school sped, classrooms, center base, classroom. And then kind of mechanical room and storage in this area, right here, kind of the business office area. So we've got a number in there for that, about eight hundred thousand for remodeling. Travis and I worked out the numbers for getting those new boilers in there and updating the water service. So that, that kind of comes into a odd location as well, down in the old gym area, I want to say kind of the, what would it be, southwest corner?
Hallway leading to the boiler.
Yeah, so we, we need to update that service, and that would be around twenty thousand, so. For site work, we're looking at, got kind of some in there for some site utilities. Some fill for, over here in the VOTAC wing. We'd be filling some of the parking lot, little bit of fill down here at the tech wing, and then pay, repainting this parking lot, we kind of put that in to repaint that. So then when you add the contractor's fees on there, the cost of construction for this complete project would be sixteen point five million. And then above that, the soft costs would be design fees, which would be all the engineering and architectural fees. And then along with that would be some other costs that you guys incur. We'd like to include that in here too, so you kind of know the total project cost. That would be costs for things like a site survey, we need to do soil borings wherever we're gonna build, and then construction testing, which is required by the building code. And those are costs that you guys incur kind of outside the scope of the contract. So, total project cost for this whole thing would be eighteen point six million.
Patty, one question I have, what, how much square footage do we have in our vocational?
I knew you were gonna ask me that, and I, I don't have it, but I think I can figure it out for you.
I got it, I do.
Do you have it, okay?
Can I just?
Don't see our.
What we're realizing the energy, the wrestling area and the VOTAC wing, nineteen thousand six hundred forty-four square foot.
Okay. So really, when you have on, you know, phase one, CTE wing, wrestling, elementary office addition, that's twenty-one thousand eight hundred sixty square feet, we're basically replacing what we have with more efficient newer, the same? Just a little bit bigger, so close.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the CTE wing is, you know, I don't.
I think it's a lot more efficient.
Right, that's right. I agree, very efficient.
So that was kind of option one, all inclusive. Option two, just kind of looked at if we, you know, split this and kind of did the, the project depth armory site along with, you know, demoing the tech wing. Doing a phase one would be the CTE wing, kind of the office addition. And theater, so it's kind of just the same scope of work really, but two separate sites, yeah. And, so a lot of the numbers are similar, and you get down to the, the bottom line, and it's pretty, pretty close to the same cost. I did notice I, I missed getting some of my site work in on this option here. So, and that would be some of the paving, the fill on this side, so I can update that and get that to you. But you know, what's interesting is that you, you actually, you know, you're building more space, new space, because you're, you're not able to share things like lobbies, you know, corridors, changing rooms. So, you, you end up actually building more space, you know, really we would need to build another restroom set two down at this other site for the new gym that we're adding. So, you know, that's another thousand square feet that we need to add to that project. So, so there really are some efficiencies when you do it all together as well. The third option, let's see here, the, the third option is, is kind of a combo, I guess. Kind of looking at the CTE wing again, wrestling, the elementary office addition.
Looks like you basically just take out the theater.
Yeah, and, and the, and so the thing that's interesting, if you take out the theater or the gym, the costs are, actually end up being about the same. You, you know, you have a little more square footage with, with the theater, but not too much. You, you have a little bit more.
You took both out.
If, if you take one or the other.
Yeah, but I mean in this option, you.
Took both out, that's right, okay, this was, this was our basic option.
Or, because the phase one says CTE wing, wrestling, elementary office.
Yeah, so, so that would be this, this, and then we took out all of this.
Okay, so it'd be the wrestling room, that little purple thing on the south?
Yep.
Okay.
So that'd just be a parking lot, the old CTE.
Yep, you could just, you know, take that down, or you could use it as a parking lot, or you could, like you said, you know, water, whatever you'd like to do there. So, so that's.
This option doesn't address, you know, some of the auxiliary D M issues and?
Right. It's kind of a, well, it's, it's an option that could get you some things, but that doesn't, that does not address the locker rooms, gym, that kind of thing. So, again, it's just kind of getting back to priorities and. But I think you do have a lot of options.
We do, yeah. At that point, there's a lot of options. And it can be tweaked, this is Patty's best Terry Redd.
Well, it's, it's really good, Patty, thank you Patty, it's really good. Gives some very nice ideas, and, you know, that, that image right there really does show an awful lot as to what you could do with that CTE wing, in my opinion.
Yeah. And I, I did meet with Bo and Fred, and they gave some good input on that, and they felt pretty good about the square footages that we were showing, and, you know, I think everybody's in agreement, you, you want to make sure you build these the right size. There are some things you can add in the future, and there are other things that, once you have them, they're kind of, they are what they are, so you just want to make sure we get it right the first time. So I guess other things in this brochure, and you guys can just kind of throw it at your leisure, but, you know, I've kind of had the building assessment in here, Travis has a nice ME assessment in here. We've got some stakeholder comments, just kind of the highlights of the bigger items that we mentioned. There are, you know, some pretty basic general items that, that I didn't put in here, but really more the, the bigger items that need to be addressed more as part of the building project.
Anything else, gentlemen?
You good? I'm good for now, yep.
Larry, you good?
Yeah.
All right.
So how do you think though? We'd like to close on, I mean, we'd really like to tackle your project.
We really would, yeah. It's pretty exciting, you know, schools are the heart of a small town. Pretty exciting project for your community, I think, and for the school district. You guys are really trying to do some good things. And yeah, we have Bearcats.
Appreciate that.
We'd love to, we'd love to be part of whatever you do here. I do have another brochure for you guys too that I'd like to leave you. It's really more geared to the team that we've put together to work on your projects. You know, if you decide to proceed with us, I'd like to hand those out if you don't mind, and just talk about them briefly.
Thank you.
And so, I guess just to kind of start off, you know, Architecture Incorporated, we're a, we're an architecture and interior design firm, and we like to select our engineers based on the projects that we're pursuing. For example, Travis, you know, he's got so much knowledge of your existing facilities that, that brings a lot of value to both you and us as we're working on the project. So, the team we put together, Travis, and we've got an electrical engineer, Brad Schott. Travis has worked with Brad before, and I work with Brad on just about every school that we do, except for the ones I do with Travis. So, Brad has a great deal of knowledge as far as schools.
He, he was the engineer that just stepped in at Sioux Falls.
Yes, yeah, Pete and I worked together on Jefferson High School, let's just wrap it up. We're gonna open this, this fall. And then Julian Pearson is a structural engineer we work with all the time, and he's in Sioux Falls as well, but again, we work with him all the time on a lot of schools. And Paul Corn, I think he might have done, you guys, some work at the track over here a few years back. He's with Sayer Associates in Sioux Falls, and again, we work with him on school projects all the time. So again, I think you guys could just page through and take a look at our portfolio. Steve Jasher in our office, he's our, we call him our education expert. I don't think there's anybody in the state that's done as many school projects as Steve, and he, he will be working with us on this project as well. And then you have an interior designer, Brianna Lorch, who would likely be helping us on this job. But I think, you know, there's just a good portfolio of our work in here. If you take a look at the inside cover too, you'll see a, a list of references that you could certainly contact. You probably know a number of these folks, one of them, Chad Story, I'm guessing a lot of you know, Trenta Hasborn is over at their switch, but feel free to call any of them, we'd be happy to chat with you. And so there's just some other general information here that I, I think you could take a look at, and Travis said, we'd love to work on your projects here, so.
Okay, thank you very much Patty, thanks Travis, I mean, this is great information and some really good things to take a look at, and I'm sure we're gonna be getting back to you quickly.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell you what, gentlemen, let's take a five minute break, or we could get, come on back in about three, five minutes, your house outside. All right, gentlemen, just go back here, back on the record. So folks, I know we've had conversations over the last two meetings, last meeting, whether we would eat, well, or two meetings ago, whether we would listen to ISG, AI, or both. At this point in time, I guess I would, just trying to figure out where the board is going, do we want to entertain a motion as to proceed with one entity at this point in time? Do we want to have discussion about this and just keep pushing forward? Where are we at?
I, I guess I would make a motion to hire AI to begin the, the design and planning phase of a project.
I mean, obviously, we're not, it's, it's phases, we're just planning, we can't do anything here, I just wondered, do we want to keep moving with that? If you've got a motion, do we have a second?
I'll make the motion so that we can get a discussion going. I've made the motion, Larry, to hire AI.
That's a little clear.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discussion, and I think, to be quite frank, I mean, conversations start with you, gentlemen, you guys are the ones that have put in a lot of hours, you know, we get the, the, the executive session, or not executive session, but the executive Cliff Notes version, you know, for an hour, excuse me, I mean, the right way of saying it, where you guys have put in a lot of hours.
We've met with Patty about three, four times.
Yep. And ISG has been on site, Jim.
Been on site.
You've met with them.
True, and we did a Zoom with them, you know, it was a little different. We received different information tonight, so to speak, but, you know, Patty was a little ahead of the game, cause she was familiar with the facility and had done some previous work, you know. Nothing against ISG either.
No, no, when I, when I looked at the presentation tonight, I wrote down just some Cliff Notes here, you, you know, ISG, they jumped right in and they focused on their assessment, which was worth every penny, because they had, they brought a lot of good ideas to the table.
Well, they spent a lot of time on the vocational wing and water damage or whatever, which, yeah, you can spend a lot of time on it, but I don't know, phases going forward, if, I penciled some of that out, you know. I mean, you could spend a million dollars just a little to fix the inadequacies or things that, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, the things that they rated as poor in the old egg wing, on the original, not the one here today, but the one we had before. So, they focused on something a little different, but that's.
Yep.
But that would eliminate if we're not doing anything with that, so if we're going with AI moving forward, we're not looking back at, we're fixing, is that my thought? Is that where I'm going?
Well, like, when Kenny said, I mean, flat out, I think, I mean, I thought you asked him a question, Joel, and Larry, and you said, no, I don't think it's worth investing in to that vocational way, and I think that was, that was telling, when he's telling you about everything and what it would cost you to fix, and then he says, no, I don't think that's a good investment.
See, yeah, when you, like I said, I totaled up, and I didn't total up some of the other bigger ticket items that were in there, but it was at seven fifty, so I have a couple of the other bigger ticket items and, uh, uh, these preliminary that AI had, on the CTE wing and whatever, you know. Basically, I think it was at four million or whatever.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Well, I'm just thinking, everything that's got to be done, you know, no matter what, we got to do something with the boiler, we're, and that wing is insufficient, and we're busting, and we're, we've got kids down at a different location, and they travel back and forth, and we've got shortcomings here at the school, and if we're going to fix something, it doesn't fix itself, we've got to move forward with it.
That's right, you know, one thing that caught, did that ISG caught my ear when they talked about this twenty year plan, and, you know, you've got to phase these roof repairs over twenty years, so you're not taking such a big bite of the apple when you have to, I mean, that's what we're doing here, you know, we're, we're dealing with a eighty year old building right now, and at some point, somebody's got to deal with it, and we're the lucky ones.
Interest rates were favorable.
Yes.
Costs are unknown, but we don't know unless we look into it.
That's right. We don't know, that's, that's a huge unknown, and I can tell you, in the industry, things have, you know, skyrocketed this spring in my industry, and now they're kind of flattening, we're even seeing a little bit of a downward trend, but who knows where we'll be in a year, and we're, we're a year away, you know, from spending any money, you know, considerable on the project right now, so things could change.
Right.
But we are, we have an opportunity right now to lock in cheap, long-term interest rates. And I don't think we should walk away from that opportunity.
But if we're not going to actually start construction for a year or two, what are interest rates going to be in a year or two?
He thinks we could lock in later this year yet.
If, if we were to be far enough along in the process by fall, we could lock in interest rates.
That under two?
Yes.
Well, I guess, I mean, I do things differently in my own personal, I figure out how much money I'm going to spend before I determine what I'm going to do, I mean, are we going to just do a boiler, or are we going to spend the eighteen million dollars and build a hole in the building? And are we, to decide who we're to go with, we basically got to decide, cause Arc Inc. just gave us the new building plans, where ISG gave us all these other things that we can do. But with Arc Inc., we're not doing, it's phased in. We can go the boiler, which we know we have to do, then we could do the CTE wing, it's, you know, that's an option too. This, this is just to move forward, so we can decide what we're going to do. I mean, so Arc Inc. gave us the new building options, they didn't give us any options as far as the egg wing, as far as what we can do with that. You know, ISG listed it all out, what you can do for how much and all that, where Arc Inc. is just new stuff, right?
Then they put the new egg wing in here, oh, you mean the repair on that.
Yeah, if we're going to decide who we're going with, Arc Inc. is all new construction, where ISG gave us different, you know, you can fix this, this or this, for this amount, or you can go new. Yeah, now we're back to our original, where we started, apples and apples, you know, it's, we weren't going to get apples and apples. We as a board now have to determine, are we moving forward, or are we going to, you know.
Yeah.
Now, I'm saying we're doing any of these projects.
The, the ISG, you know, if we, if we dig right into that, they were addressing a lot of the whatevs, you know, they really weren't addressing any of our efficiency issues with that building down there. The, the, you know, they called it the nineteen thirty nine building, you know, they were just saying, here's, here's what we can do to, to get by, we, so we're not addressing any efficiency.
They pointed the problems and told us what it would cost particularly in that, right?
They basically are giving you a picture, as he was saying, it's a balance thing, you look at the cost of repairing and/or upgrading an old facility, or the cost of a new, and find that balance. That's, trying to see a picture for us, as to what is in the cost to upgrade, and how much, well, they didn't give us costs on new stuff, but you can get in that for.
Yeah, and then the question was, is it worth upgrading? And the answer was. Is it worth a fix? And he said, I wouldn't do it.
I thought that was telling.
Yeah.
You know, that's what he's selling, and he, he, he sits and tells you and says, no, I wouldn't do it, I, I think that's important, I mean, that's, and that's why I say I appreciate that type of honesty and candor, you know, from vendors, because you have the tendency just to get up here and say what's politically correct, or to say what you think the, uh, the buyer wants to hear, but I appreciate when he said, no, I don't think it's a good investment.
Which is why Evan Joel seemed to go with Patty's. And then, you know, to get a little further down the line, uh, you know, I think they both would do very high quality work, but AI focuses on schools only. You know, so they, they, when you look at their resume, I mean, they've got, they've done a ton of schoolwork in South Dakota, so I think that they know the industry, you know, the, the education industry, probably a little better than ISG.
That seven fifty, when I totaled it up from this, this here one, you got to copy this one, that didn't include the boiler, the heating.
And then their, their number one plan on that was one six on the boiler and heat.
Yep.
Two three.
But that, that was just to repair it.
Were you just in the egg wing part, or within all of that?
No, that was the, I just focused on the egg wing, what they listed as four.
He's referencing the, um, the document that I emailed to you guys. They did use that one tonight, it had all of the, the charts.
Yeah.
On the suggestions and potential costs, so what you're saying, Larry, is you calculated all of the upgrades in what the vocational wing would be in, and the seven hundred, you turned it out. And that was to include the boiler, you put your.
Correct.
Just their core rating.
Yeah.
Now, it's just their core rating, so their, their repairs on that, just according to vocational wing are two point three, just repairs. New construction, CTE wing, wrestling, elementary, office addition, which basically solves exactly what we had, their estimate from, read back a little bit further, four point five, if I had my cheaters from AI, that's where I think, that's why Kevin's telling you, you can invest two point three, and we're still in that exact same building, and just kicking the can down the road again, to a future board like you're saying, Joel.
Yep.
That's going to have to fix the problem somewhere down the time, and it still doesn't fix the problem of bringing everybody back from Main Street, we're still keeping them up on Main Street.
Yeah, if we pick one for, we gave you this info that ISG provided us, and we can utilize that in making our decision on what we're going to do, you know.
I personally was, you know, in my opinion, I was, I was very impressed with the knowledge that Kevin brought, I mean, it was a good education tonight, I, I was very impressed with Kevin, I learned a lot, just about the different mills, you know, on the roofing, I mean, maybe there's a lot of people out there would say they know that idea, and there's things that I, I learned from Kevin tonight that I think can give me information moving forward. I thought that, at the same time, it is, it is clear that Patty has, you know, a vast array of experience in these schools, I mean, she definitely doesn't come in selling, in my opinion, overselling, she's not an aggressive individual, uh, but she's got a knowledge base that is there, and it's probably proven within the information she provides to us as to their background. I guess I would be, I was the guy that recommended we should definitely talk to ISG, because I've seen the work that they've done with other organizations that I've been a part of, but when it comes to this, I would have to say, I'm, I'm more in favor of moving forward with Architectural Inc. I think, long term, they could give us a, a better feel for where we're at.
I'm just looking back through here, Larry. They did not have a new roof in their list of repairs. ISG did that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I saw the roof on there, because the price kind of blew me away, I thought.
Do you remember what it was, Aaron?
It was in the hundreds. Or was that just on what you sent us, Jim?
It was just on what they sent us, on what he sent us, we didn't get it tonight. It was just on what they sent us, on what he sent us. We didn't get it tonight. They didn't have it.
No, they didn't provide that tonight.
Just the ductwork was around.
390,000.
What page is that on?
I didn't bring my printed copy.
1431.
Oh, it's not in the last. It's in the structural portion.
And the exterior roof on the resting room is fair. That's 215,000. I didn't add that in either, so.
So 640 if you added them together?
Well, yeah, I didn't put that in. It's fair.
Okay, here we go, yep.
They're saying the exterior roof for the vocational wing is 390,000. The roof for the 1939 gym or the resting room is 215,000.
That was fair.
Uh, one's poor, one's fair.
So there's 640 that we're already adding in now and just repairs now.
Four up three.
Sorry, three versus 4.5 for new.
I guess long-term, what's our option? Are we going to move forward with, or are we going to?
All right, so Larry, I'll, I'll say you call it then and Joel made the motion. Larry, second it. Any further discussion?
I mean, if we don't move forward, are we stopping tonight?
No, I think you can always stop.
No, no, we're going on who we're going, all right?
Correct, correct, 100%. All right, all in favor of, anyway, I apologize, any further discussion? All in favor of moving forward with AI? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, anything else for tonight? We have executive session for personnel. If I can get a motion to move into executive session for personnel. Thank you, Ern. Second, thank you, Marty. We'll be moving into executive session. We'll come back out. There will be no further action tonight. Our next scheduled board meeting, I believe, is Wednesday, June 16th, correct? It's up at the night?
I believe it's June 16th.
Yep. All right.